Those that are able, please rise and come to order.
Good afternoon to our council meetings this evening, and would you please remain standing for the singing of our national anthem? Thank you very much, please be seated. And it is my pleasure this evening to welcome Pastor Henry Cranenberg from the Emmanuel Christian Reformed Church. Pastor Cranenberg was born in Athens, Ontario into a pastor's family that has served cities and towns across Canada. Pastor Cranenberg has been an ordained minister in the Christian Reformed Church of North America for 29 years, and currently serves the Emmanuel Christian Reformed Church, the largest church by the corner, on the corner of Mohawk and West 5th since the summer of 2000. He and his wife Marnie have four adult children, one of whom remains based here in Hamilton, as well as a recently born grandson. So Pastor Cranenberg is appreciative of what the city of Hamilton has meant for him during his years here, and especially the important years of raising a family. Please welcome Pastor Cranenberg. Pastor?
Thank you, your worship. I am privileged to be here, and as you noted, we are thankful for what Hamilton has been for us as a family personally, but also for our church. Most of my life I spent between Ward 11, where our home is, and Ward 8, where our church is. And so admittedly, I have a special thanks for our councillors who serve there. But I also recognize it takes 15 wards and an incredible amount of staff to make a city here in Hamilton. Emmanuel Christian Reformed Church, also as a partner in true city, is committed to playing a role in serving this city and is committed to its wellbeing. And on behalf of the Emmanuel Church, I want to say thank you to you, our city leaders, and to let you know that part of our worship services regularly at Emmanuel include prayer for you and the work that you do for us and on our behalf. As you begin your meetings this evening, I invite you to join me in an opening prayer, which I will pray from the Christian perspective. Let us pray. Almighty God, while there is much about you that we do not know, and while what we believe to know about you can differ so much from one to the other, yet together in this room we pause for prayer specifically to you. We express our gratitude for so many good things in life and a Thanksgiving weekend that offered time and space to enjoy it. This evening, we specifically give you thanks for our mayor, our councillors, and so many staff who worked together to make Hamilton the city that it is. For their gifts, their perspectives, for their willingness to debate and wrestle through ideas, all for the purpose of seeking the best for our city, we say thank you to you, recognizing your provision in this. But you also are a God who identifies an interest in what we do, and who has said that prayer is not just about acknowledging you, but inviting you into the work we have in this your world. This evening, we do that, asking that you give wisdom for the words we speak, the actions we approve, the monies we direct, the responsibilities we exercise, that in the privilege of the position we exercise, we may serve the good of the people and city you have placed in our care. In the end, may it not just be about us, but you who we honor. We pray this in the name of Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Thank you very much, Pastor. Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Pastor, for those encouraging prayers for us as we move forward. Much appreciated. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there are three added communications. 516 is six items of correspondence, A through F, respecting the light rail transit project to be received and referred to the October 25th Special GIC. 517 from Joel Farber, respecting the corporate strategic growth initiatives to be received and referred to the General Manager of Planning and Economic Development. And 518 from Valerie Wrighton, respecting a site-specific exemption from a change to the zoning bylaw amendment for 165 Queenston Road to be received and referred to item two of the planning committee report. There is one added notice of motion, 8-1, respecting the city of Hamilton endorsement of Inwell Community Home. And one added private and confidential matter, 10.1, legal opinion on motions with respect to the LRT.
Okay, thank you. So in terms of added communication items in the agenda, Counselor Marula?
No, just on, because I know you brought this up via correspondence today with council, on 10-1, we are going to be bringing that into the public forum, I presume, this evening?
Well, so council will have to waive the solicitor client privilege.
Would you like me to waive that accordingly?
At the appropriate time, yeah, when we get to it later on the agenda. I think what some members of council might want to ask the solicitor question at that point, so I will turn to you when we get to that issue and feel free.
Fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So on the agenda as amended, motion by Counselor Ferguson, seconded by Counselor Vanderby. All in favor? Carried. Any declarations of interest? Counselor Ferguson?
Just a question to Rose or maybe Janice. I'm not sure, do you have to declare conflict of interest when something's in a report that's in the information section? There's no decision being made?
Rose?
Yes, Mayor, normally the clerk or the city solicitor can't give an individual member of council advice on that, but if it's something that's not being decided, I would say no.
I didn't hear the answer, but...
Her answer was, if it's something that isn't being decided, her answer would be no, but it lies with you in terms of your decision.
Because it's in the information section, so there's no action taken other than to receive a delegation. I'll declare that.
I think in...
Page eight, General Issues Committee, item E, under information.
Okay. Duly noted. Any other declarations? Hearing none, thank you. Members of council may have a motion to approve the minutes of September the 28th meeting, moved by B. Johnson, seconded by Counselor Marula. All in favor?
Carried.
Carried. And members of council, you have communications items 5-1 through 518. We will go through them individually. On item 5-1, all in favor? 5-2, 5-3, 5-4, 5-5, 5-6, 5-7, 5-8, 5-9, 5-10, 5-11. On 5-11...
Yeah, my only point is, I think we need to be consistent in these letters. There's no sense referring it to Jason, because council's already decided on this matter, so I move it simply to be received.
Okay. Seconded by Counselor Green. Okay, comments on that? Counselor Ferguson?
How about Counselor...
Oh, sorry. Counselor Jackson?
It's Ward 6, Counselor Tom Jackson, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I know. I had a little lapse there, sorry.
I'm just, and I'm not looking for any response necessarily, but I'm just curious as to, we're still receiving these correspondence, Mr. Mayor, from Book Road residents or owners of land in that area, and I'm just a little curious as to their submissions to us. And I understand Counselor Ferguson saying just to receive it, because we've dealt with it, but I guess I'm just curious and perplexed by, is there something they know that we don't know in terms of continuing to submit these and opportunities for further conversation or discussion down the road? So I guess short of a reply from either politically or the bureaucracy, Mr. Mayor, I guess I'm just a little puzzled by why we're continuing to receive these unless some of the landowners must know something or further conversation will unfold down the road that we should be prepared for. That's all. I just put that thought on the table. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I don't have an answer to that, but certainly something you could ask of our staff after the meeting at any point in time. We do have a motion on the floor that it be received, moved by Ferguson, seconded by Green. All...
But if it's inappropriate through you, if I can to Jason, Jason, you suggested last time simply to receive it because just council has decided. Do you feel the same on this one?
Through the chair, yes, that's sufficient, and staff's not planning on doing anything further at this point. Our comments have been submitted based on the council resolution, and there's nothing further happening on staff's end from our perspective.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? 5-12. 5-13. On 5-13, Counselor Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to give kudos to the Veterans Committee, of which Counselor Marula did sit on for many years, and currently Counselor Brenda Johnson and Counselor Pursuit, I believe, serve on with citizens. And isn't this very nice from one of our constituents, thanking the city of Hamilton for the Veterans Parking Permit Pilot Program? In our city, we provide one of many unique type programs, whether it's for seniors, Mr. Mayor, whether it's for the Golden Age Bus Pass, and here we are providing what some municipalities don't, veterans parking permits, veterans free parking, just one small way of saluting those who have fought for our freedom in this country, and I just didn't want this correspondence to go by without being recognized, and especially those members of council, including, God rest his soul, Counselor Bernie Morley, who served as well on the Veterans Committee. Thanks, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me those comments.
Thank you, and we would all agree with those sentiments for sure. On 5-13, all in favor? 5-14. 5-14, Counselor Green.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Remember, I brought forward the motion in support of postal banking. I just wanted to report that I had the opportunity, I was selected, to actually be a witness at the Standing Committee on Government Operations and Estimates. It was in Cambridge, and I had the opportunity to go and speak about Hamilton, particularly in Ward 3, payday loans and the opportunity for postal banking to be an alternative to that. And it was a very interesting opportunity. This is the response in the correspondence back from the minister, but for those that are interested, it was on Tuesday, September 27th, and I'll be posting my transcript online for those that are interested to go see. But I guess they're going across the country having the conversation, and postal banking, in my hopes, will be one of the considerations that they have, and I know Councillors Jackson, DeVal and Whitehead all worked on this file, and appreciate their efforts with that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Whitehead?
Thank you, and it dovetails nicely, because we had a special guest earlier here today paying us taxes, apparently, and that was Counselor DeVal. And Counselor DeVal had indicated to me that he actually substituted on that committee when they were out in Halifax, PEI, and Sydney, looking at the whole cat post issue, so the postal banking issue, as well as home mail delivery. And he shared an interesting tidbit that is obviously public, because it's all over PEI, and there was a Liberal MP that was a witness at this presentation and indicated that he had run on maintaining home delivery and that he was holding the minister accountable for it. So I thought it was kind of interesting to have a Liberal MP make that kind of comment. Anyway, I just thought I'd highlight that.
Okay, thank you. On 5-14, all in favor? Carried. 5-15. 5-16. 5-17. 5-18. Counselor Skelly may have a motion on the communications.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Terry Whitehead, that Council Communications, 5.1 through 5.18, be approved as presented.
Thank you. All in favor? Counselor Jackson may have a motion to move into committee of the whole for the consideration of the committee reports.
Your worship, you may. Moved by myself and seconded by Ward 7 Counselor Donna Skelly, that our council move into committee of the whole for consideration of all the committee reports.
And what does our council say to that? All in favor? Carried. So Counselor Donna Skelly, will you please join us and lead us through the committee reports?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The General Issues Committee presents Report 16.022 and respectfully recommends value for money consulting report performance measures, research and next steps. Citywide, item 7.1. Do you want me to read through it? Item 1? Carried? Speak to it.
Yes, thank you. I want to thank staff. If you recall, the last term at council, I believe it was last term, it might mean longer now, we initiated the motion to look at value for money audits, and we started the process. They got somewhat diverted on a particular issue, certainly didn't accomplish their full mandate, but they clearly, through that exercise, realized that we had some work to do on performance measures in many areas, because it's tough to measure and look for savings if you don't have those systems in place. I believe, I guess through the city manager, that this is the approach we are now taking. Is that correct?
Through your chairman, yes, that's correct.
Thank you. So I want to thank staff. I think that at the end of the day, when all these processes are in place, the taxpayers will be better for it. Thank you.
Any further questions? Comments? Mayor Eisenberger, may I please have a motion to approve the report as presented and receive the information section?
You certainly may. That be moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Judy Partridge, that the 22nd report of the Special General Issues Committee be adopted as presented and the information section received.
All in favor?
Carried.
Carried. The Public Works Committee presents Report 16.016 and respectfully recommends item 1. Item 2. Yes, Counselor Farr.
Madam Deputy Mayor, I've been in communication with the very good people at Hamilton Bike Share today. Initially, they had a concern with respect to what is highlighted at the bottom of page 3 of 11. It looks like amendments to the original motion to Public Works. I first and foremost want to apologize. I usually catch at least the committee before moving forward on something like this, but I think it's rather minor in nature. I'm going to, very respectfully, given that I did not catch the debate, request that we table C and D, that asks for staff to request the operators of Hamilton Bike Share Inc., Sobe Hamilton, to provide audited financial statements, to the GM of Finance and Corporate Services for review, and then the GM's review of the audited financial statements. Be referred to the Audit Finance Administration Committee for consideration. There's probably all kinds of good debate around that, I'm not certain, but there was a typo in the original public agenda that was released. The name has since been fixed. They just shared this with me now. They, and I've written a note, this was sent to me this morning at 10:00, I didn't see it until 4:00. But again, part C and D in highlight. I don't want to hold up the rest of this report. I did look at the report. It's good stuff. I just want to ask that finance staff, if I may, reach out to Hamilton Bike Share Inc., which is a not-for-profit, to offer some guidance. This is simply about how they may carry out a cost-effective audited financial statement review, whatever that's being asked for here, and approach our appropriate finance staff and ask for some guidance to that end. It's a cost thing more than anything. Those audited financial efforts do cost these not-for-profits a considerable amount, in some occasions that we've heard before in the past, particularly when we deal with boards and agencies. So I respectfully ask that part C and D be tabled, not stricken, and that the appropriate staff from finance make an effort to reach out and help them along with this particular endeavor.
Sorry, do we need to pass this as motion?
Madam Chair, if I could just ask for clarification, table it in council, or do you want to refer it back to the Public Works?
Refer back C and D. Thank you, Rose.
Okay, refer back to the Public Works.
Before we go, Counselor Whitehead, did you want to speak to this?
Yeah, I'm a bit surprised. I don't mind working with the organization, but we've gone through this step with festival friends, and I remember having Lauren Lieberman in front of us, and I remember my good friend over the side in the position he took then. So when we talk about nonprofit organizations that are receiving a fairly significant amount of taxpayers' dollars, then there's an expectation of certain level of accountability. I'm not sure, I mean, I'm sure that this is a direction, but how and what that statement or how it would look, I would hope would be consistent with all other nonprofit organizations that currently report to council. So can I ask through the deputy mayor to Mike Ziegler, what are the expectations for many of the organizations that we fund?
So through the deputy mayor, in the case of the community enrichment grant program, that's the city's principal grant program, is there is a requirement for audited financial statements from the recipients of the grant program. If I understand Counselor Farr's request, we could meet, reach out to Sobe to understand the nature of the preparation of their financial documents and report back to Public Works as to, again, the status, the most recent year that the financial statements are available and provide some options to Public Works Committee at that time in terms of what committee wishes to pursue in terms of the nature of the financial statement. So again, the expectation would be that they would be audited financial statements, but if for some reason the organization does not have the most recent year in a audited form, we could reach out to Public Works Committee and provide an update as the nature of their financial documents.
Counselor Whitehead, through the chair?
I, through the chair, believe that this was really about establishing that process. It was quite surprising by my colleagues around the table that they weren't providing audit statements to staff. So if they're not prepared this particular term, sorry, this year, and this catches them off guard, I don't have any problem granting them reprieve and maybe just provide a financial statement. But certainly, they shouldn't be excluded from a longstanding practice of every other nonprofit organization that receives taxpayers' funds and what the expectations of this council are. And I think it's been pretty well laid out. We've had this debate in the past with other organizations. So if the issue, if we're looking for time in regards to this particular year, because they haven't budgeted for the audit, I have no problem providing, and I was a secondary, I believe, to the original motion at Public Works, I have no problem providing them that for this year, just to provide some form of financial statement that's satisfactory to Mike Ziegler. But next year, the same rule that applies to every other nonprofit in regards to audit statements would apply to them. So I don't know if we have to table it. I would look to my colleague, but if he's okay with that kind of direction and have Mike Ziegler sit down with him and work with him just on the financial statement, with the understanding that in subsequent years, they will be required as other organizations, I think we can make that decision right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitehead. Counselor Green?
A little bit of confusion with the tabling motion and the direction and Bruno's rules, which are often quoted around the table. But I think what's important to see here is, just for my own clarity with regard, are we still on the tabling motion? Is that still on the table? Referral? So I can speak to this? Okay. Just so that what's not lost here, which I think is the fantastic news story, which I hope certainly in all of this mess, isn't lost through you, how much is the Green Municipal Fund for this grant, for this particular project? What is, I say that when we had a chance to go to FCM, we spent, both Counselor Farr and I, considerable time talking about this project in Winnipeg. I'm just curious, if you could, for the public record, state how much FCM's kicking in.
Mike, do you have the answer to that?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I'm not familiar with the contribution from FCM. I'm just looking at the report to see if it's referenced in the recommendations.
And what about the Hamilton Community Foundation, cornerstone of our community, substantial investment in this opportunity? Do we have what's listed there as well?
Through the chair, Mike?
Through the deputy mayor, I'm sorry, in the recommendations of the report, I don't see the contribution broken down by organization.
Well, I have to say, I'm a little bit embarrassed about that. We have two major good news stories, a major grant coming from FCM, a huge partner in the Hamilton Community Foundation, on this particular motion, and yet their contribution isn't listed to give the public a full, clear picture about what's being brought to the table and who's paying for what. Sometimes we get confused about who's paying for what. And I would like to ask that in any report back, particularly when we have philanthropic donations coming through to the city, that we list them. I think it's the least we can do, and part of a best practice of gratitude in terms of, you know, being grateful and receiving monies from the community foundation. And I would also like to say and go on the record and commend staff for pursuing this in the Green Municipal Fund. It's a very competitive fund. There's applications that come from across the country for this. This is a winning program, obviously. It's been vetted by both the FCM and by the Hamilton Community Foundation in terms of its effectiveness. And to have this conversation and not include that value add, so in the first one, we talk about what's the cost dollar averaging, the value for dollars, value for money consulting report.
Counselor Green, I believe staff would like to speak to it.
Perfect.
Sorry, through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I apologize. It was a Public Works report, so I didn't have the details of the reports, but in terms of the $525,000 total contribution, the contribution from Hamilton Community Foundation is $49,245, and the contribution from FCM Green Municipal Fund is $274,500. So again, that represents the contributions from those two organizations. Apologize. Again, it was a Public Works report.
Thank you, Mike.
Sorry, Madam Chair, through you. Mike, I completely understand, you're not going to have the line items and everything. I'm just looking in this actual motion, in a motion that goes dollar by dollar, line by line on this particular fund, I find that we missed the opportunity to highlight the two-thirds funding coming from outside the tax levy, which is, I think, a great story when we hear about it in other projects. We celebrate it. So let's not lose that celebration, and perhaps as a suggestion, not a direction, that when we do have other upper levels of government or philanthropic donations through to the city, that if we're going to reference them, that we also include their contributions so they feel valued, and so that the taxpayers gets a clear understanding about value for dollar investments in our city. Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Counselor Green. Duly noted. Counselor Ferguson?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and I don't think we have any need to be embarrassed, because the report's actually recommending approval for the funds and to go forward on the project. And the only issue we had at the committee level was, it was reported that there was a $1.5 million grant to provide the initial investment to put the bikes on the street. And the intent at the time was that they would get all the revenue from the rental of these bicycles, and they would be, some of that would be put aside to replace them as they go through their useful life. We asked staff, in fact, Counselor Collins asked the question, how much do they have in reserve right now after the number of years of operation for the replacement? And the answer was, nothing. And so we...
And so we could be staring down a situation that these have a life of five, six, seven years of having to put another $1.5 million of taxpayers' money. So the committee was interested to see where that revenue is going. We're not making any allegations. We just want to know where it is. And it sounds like, and maybe Counselor Farr can answer this question as the mover of the motion, that they've never had audit statements because they can't afford them. Through you to Counselor Farr, is that correct in your comments that it's a money thing?
So the $1.5 originally went to New York SOBE Bicycle, not Hamilton Bike Share, hence the confusion here tonight. You're asking for an audited financial report for our local not-for-profit Hamilton Bike Share, which is the local division of the company out of New York that got the original MetroLinks money, $1.5. That's where there was a bit of confusion. In fact, there was a name issue on the agenda until it had been fixed. And I do apologize, colleagues, I didn't really see it till four o'clock, so.
Through the chair, Counselor Farr.
But do they have, have they ever done an audit statement?
It doesn't look, it doesn't, they haven't shared that with me if they have. So that's their concern, the extra cost. The reference to Festival of Friends, that's the one that I forgot who it was. But remember, they came in here and asked for additional grant money to cover the cost of those types of services. The fees were 80, 90, I can't remember how much, how much money it cost.
So through you, Madam Chairman, then, to our General Manager of Public Works, Dan. It was reported to us at the committee, it was $1.5 million by the staff person in charge of this. Is that number now not correct for the initial cost of buying all the bicycles and racks and getting them installed, which was funded by MetroLinks?
Through you, Madam Chair. Unfortunately, Counselor, I don't have that information in front of me, how the program started. I do think I understand what the concern of committee is, so we'll certainly work with them, number one, to explore this idea of the reserve for the replacement of the bikes and to see what kind of documentation they can provide to our finance department to satisfy the concerns of committee.
Okay, I just don't want the council to feel we're being unreasonable when you spend, because it was reported to us as $1.5 million. That's a lot of money. And they were supposed to be building reserves to replace them, supposed to self-finance itself after that. And to date, they have nothing in reserve. That was what was reported to the committee. So we says, well, let's take, we have a fiduciary duty to know where this money's being spent, and so just ask for audit statements. And $1.5 million is a lot of money. So, you know, I'm hearing Counselor Farr say, now, it wasn't $1.5 million, that isn't what staff told us at the meeting. So I think now we'll support the referrals, so give Dan and his staff a chance to double-check that and then report back to us. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Ferguson. Still on the first-time speakers list, Counselor Partridge.
Yes, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. And along the same lines as the previous speaker, I was just a little bit confused. I don't sit on this committee, but through you to Mike. Mike, in the original agreement that we have with SOBE Bikes, is there not a requirement for them to provide audited statements? I thought there was.
So through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I'm afraid I'm not familiar. The agreement is managed through Public Works, but we could sit down with Public Works to understand what the terms of the agreement require as it relates to reporting as well. I appreciate the context in terms of the financial contribution going forward to sustaining the assets. Again, I'm not familiar with that term, so we can work with Public Works to better understand what that requirement is in the agreement. Typically, where those funds would be reflected in audited or in financial statements is on the balance sheet and the change in equity in the financial statements. So again, we would have to review the terms of the agreement that we have with the vendor as to what's required and try to identify through their financial statements whether or not that's being completed in terms of the vendor, whether they're meeting that commitment.
Okay, and thank you for that, Madam Deputy Mayor. And I'm just wondering, Dan, I know you're new in your role, you're, I don't want to assume that you're going to know what's in that original agreement since it was very much pre-your time, but do you have anything to add to that or do you have any staff here that could perhaps clarify that?
Through you, Madam Chair. No, there's nobody here that can answer that right now. I don't think there was anything in the agreement to, for them to provide the audited statements.
Okay.
But we can certainly, whatever agreements we have in place with them, we can certainly share whatever's available with committee if that's the wish.
And so based on that, I am going to support the referral to refer it back because you've heard the questions here and I think you get the gist of what we're trying to get to the bottom of here as a council. Madam Deputy Mayor, the only other question I have is on item C and D, which are being referred back. On D, it says that staff report back to the Audit Finance and Administration Committee instead, so instead of Public Works, because this originally came to Public Works, so I'm just wanting some clarity around which committee it should come back to.
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. We can work with clerks in terms of the original agreement. It might have been either through General Issues Committee or Public Works. So it probably be best that the reporting back be aligned to when the original agreement or through which standing committee the original agreement came through. So if the original agreement came through Public Works Committee, the reporting back would best align to report back to Public Works Committee.
Okay.
To have oversight over the agreement.
All right. And so that, to my point, I think would be better if it came back to Public Works, but I'm just wondering, Madam Deputy Mayor, through you to Madam Clerk, we need to change the language that's in item D. Do we need to move an amendment for that? What would the process be, please?
Madam Clerk?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. It could be done at the time that the referral goes back to the Public Works Committee. You can correct the recommendations at that point.
Okay, because it isn't really a friendly amendment if it changes the meaning of the intent, because it does change the meaning, it's not, no longer coming back to AFNA, it's now coming back to Public Works. I just want to make sure that that is captured in there and that the discussion is held back at the same rightful committee. Madam Deputy Mayor, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Partridge. Second-time speakers, Counselor Farr.
Very much appreciated. And again, I'm sorry, I didn't look at my email from 10 or 11 this morning earlier. So I would just simply move, A, that items C and D be referred back to finance and public work staff and request that the appropriate staff assist the local not-for-profit Hamilton Bike Share Incorporated on their financials and/or financial reporting. And B, since I've heard some good remarks here, that staff review the terms of the agreement between SOBE Bicycles, Inc. out of New York City, which is different, with the agreement that they had with MetroLinks in the city of Hamilton and report back on a review of that initial agreement, which was a good question. And that's seconded by Counselor Green.
Seconded by Counselor Green.
So it's a referral motion and a request in Part B for an information report on a bit of a history lesson and the breakdown on how the $1.5 initially funded to the SOBE Bicycles New York was broken down and how it affected us here in our community in a positive way.
Thank you, Counselor Farr. We still have two people. Do you wish to speak to it still? Counselor Whitehead, I apologize. Counselor Whitehead, first.
Thank you. I want to identify two things. One is, am I understanding that all financial statements actually go to the finance committee and not to Public Works? I think Counselor Ferguson had suggested that it go there for those reasons. I think that's always been, I don't remember too many financial statements, audit statements coming to Public Works at all. So the essence was where the statements go. If the issue is sorting this particular issue, of course, it probably should go back to Public Works until we sort it out. I think there's a good question here, because, I mean, this, it doesn't matter if it's MetroLinks money, at the end of the day, it's taxpayers' money and there is a concern of who's going to be at risk if there's no reserves for replacing the bicycles. And I think that was the original concern at the committee. But there's an interesting point that was raised, and I listened very intently. I'm not sure if MetroLinks has embarked on financial statements or audited statements with the New York organization or the local organization. And so I think the, understanding that mix-up might confuse this matter a little further, and that's why it makes sense now to refer it, because it might be a duplication, because if MetroLinks is going to take the responsibility of replacing and funding bicycles if the funds aren't there, then that's a different issue and that's their responsibility. If it's something falls back to the city of Hamilton, then that would be our concern and that's why we would want to make sure that we had those financial statements. So I think we need some clarity on that. The other piece, and I think Counselor Green spoke to this, and, you know, when we talk about audit statements, it's, let's be clear, this is a great organization. This is just a standard that we have for all nonprofit organizations. So let's be clear, this is nothing untoward, one, I want to make that absolutely clear. The second piece, and the piece that was lost, and Counselor Green sort of touched on it, it was unanimous vote for this particular report. So with the funding from the Federation Canadian Municipals, Canadian Community Foundation, sorry, Hamilton Community Foundation, it was unanimous support. And let's be clear what the program is. This program is about going into our code-red areas and providing affordable rentals to those that would never, ever have access to these bicycles. I mean, that's heroic, heroic, heroic. I think that's incredible that we're taking that kind of consideration. So from my perspective, it is all good news. It was just an administrative issue that should never taint and shouldn't be seen to be tainting the operation anyway, and I want to provide that clarity. As far as the answer to the question, it was Peter that I asked the question to, who was at Public Works, and he responded to me very clearly that in the agreement, so for Counselor Partridge's question, in the agreement, there is no provision for them to provide audit statements or financial statements to the city of Hamilton. So that was when the motion came forward.
Thank you, Counselor Whitehead. No further comments. May, we can go ahead with the motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion, or does Counselor Farr have to read his motion again?
It's on the referral motion first, Madam Deputy Mayor. If council would like to hear it again, Counselor Farr can read it. If they're satisfied, you can-
The referral motion, all those in favor, carried. And all item two, as amended, carried. Let's move on. Item three, Counselor Partridge.
Yes, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. And just very quickly, this is the Highway Five Grindstone Bridge Utility Relocation Class Environmental Assessment and Conceptual Design. There were three public meetings that were held, which I attended, and I just want to make sure for those who are watching or reading this agenda and minutes going forward that this is not the relocation or moving replacement of the bridge itself, the grindstone bridge. That will be done in the future. This is the relocation of the utilities, which are the hydro, the water, et cetera, that run alongside the bridge. And so that is what is going to be this particular part of the project. So it will not be nearly as disruptive as it would be to replace the bridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Partridge. Any further comments? Item three. Item four, Counselor Whitehead. Counselor-
Thank you. So I want to, first of all, I want to thank Counselor Ferguson for his continued leadership. And the other one, actually, is Doug Connolly. Certainly, this term of council, he's been very outspoken on the challenges and the issues on the expressway. And one people, one thing people need to understand is because of what is taking place and until the 403 gets the additional lane, which is all contained in this report and the motion that was put forward by Counselor Ferguson, is this traffic is now bleeding into our neighborhoods. And it's, I mean, Garth Street is an absolute uproar now because it's the last exit before you hit the 403, and if the 403 is jammed, Link is jammed, then they flood West Fifth, Mohawk, Fennel, and Garth and the Queen Street Hill. So they're having an impact. So it's kind of funny, I was reading something the other day and they said, well, if they built, you know, induced demand and they build the lane, it's just going to be used up. Well, you know, the funny part is, is that when it's plugged up, it all comes back into the neighborhood. So my counter to that is, I would suggest humbly, that if you build additional lane and it's getting filled up, it's probably because you're taking them out of the neighborhoods and putting them back on the street where they, on the highway where they belong. So I think we really need to continue putting the pressure on the minister to live up to the original obligation to put that additional lane on the 403. This motion asking the mayor to, again, correspond with the Minister of Transportation, asking for an update on the status, is very important. And it's clear that a lot of this traffic, the local public transit system, isn't a solution because it's not going to meet the needs of the many of those are taking and blocking up those highways. So thank you, staff. Thank you, counselors, for your leadership on this one.
Thank you, Counselor Whitehead. Counselor Ferguson.
Yeah, thank you very much. And this is an issue that, as Counselor White said, I've been beating the drum for a while. We had a resolution in 2011 and 2013 to the province to provide a third downbound lane. I know there's issues around A D C, but this thing can be widened into the median, so you're not going into the scarpment at all. They did kill the Niagara corridor, which would have relieved a lot of the pressure on Highway 403, but they committed to do some remedial work to 403, where pinch points are. And clearly, four lanes going into two is a pinch point. And it's causing a lot of stress to people trying to get to work. Sometimes, the day of this meeting, it took an extra half hour for me to get through here because I had to duck through Anncaster and down the link and over, down the link to get off of James to come down. The, it was backed up to Upper James, the westbound Lincoln, or Lincoln-Alexander Expressway. And the province just seems to be playing lip service with us in this. We can't get a reaction from them and it's getting worse by the day. So I'm pleased this letter, if it gets supported by council, will come under the mayor's signature then as a council resolution again and for the third time. And it's such a simple solution. In my previous life, we did many, many, many kilometers of widening into the median, so it doesn't require any expensive work to change speed, change lanes, or put new ramps in. You widen them and then you don't have to cut into the scarpment any further. And it's just a big garbage trap, that median anyway, because there's garbage around on both sides and the winds spin around and they're filled full of garbage. So I don't know how we wake them up. I mean, I've had a heck of a go for six years on the westbound access to 403, and this is the other one. But it's causing a lot of stress in my community, and I know Counselor Whitehead has two motions going to the Public Works meeting for two more stop signs to be put up on Scenic Drive. Well, a lot of my constituents take Scenic Drive now because it's not congested, which is causing speed to pick up. And so the reaction is slow them down more by putting in two stop signs. We wouldn't have to do that if this wasn't plugged up. So I urge my council colleagues to support this. We've got to put together an action plan on how to move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ferguson. Counselor Brenda Johnson.
Thank you. Through you, Deputy Mayor. I noticed that on item B, that staff be directed to report back and conducting a detailed traffic study to determine how many cars and vehicles are using the roadways. There's been a lot of chatter on social media that the equipment that are on the overpasses right now is actually photo radar. So we kiboshed that to say, no, the province hasn't given us any permission to use photo radar, so they're not photo radar, but please do slow down anyway. So can you just please confirm, through you to Dan, the equipment that we see on the overpasses are to count cars or they're just looking pretty?
Through you, Madam Chair. That's correct. It is not photo radar, it's just for traffic counts.
Thank you. So just wanted to clear that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Jackson.
Thanks, Madam Deputy Mayor. Likewise, kudos to Counselor Doug Connolly for raising this issue about a year ago. And I'm very pleased that there were some members of Public Works Committee last week that just simply said this matter is over and done with and there's really no appetite to move further on at least exploring the expansion of Red Hill Valley Parkway and Lincoln Alexander Parkway. But I'm glad in the D part that we committee, and I believe it ended up being unanimously at the end of a long day of conversation and discussion on this, the committee decided that this should remain on the outstanding business list, looking at exploring the feasibility of expanding Red Hill Valley Parkway and Lincoln Alexander, Madam Deputy Mayor, to six lanes. The irony of all this, Madam Deputy Mayor, for, I guess, the few of us that predated amalgamation, was that the original plan was six lanes for both Red Hill and Lincoln Alexander Parkway. And the irony, in spite of the pinch points and the problems we have, which are legitimate at the Q E W as well as at the 403, is that if we had the money and we had the original government support versus the NDP at the time in the early 90s, we would have built the six lanes. So it would have been six lanes up and running for the last, well, almost 20 years since 1997 with the link and almost 10 years since 2007 with the Red Hill Valley Parkway. So I just find it a little bit ironic with some who are having some hesitation or reservation about even exploring, looking at the expansion, because the original plan had called for the six lanes. Now, we did what we could, given the money we had at the time, and after the Ray government, the Harris government came in, to their credit and to the McGinty government's credit, they provided up the 50% cost share so we could get on with building the link as well as the Red Hill Valley Parkway. It has provided a quality of life, Madam Deputy Mayor, besides, for many reasons that most of us supported it over the years, the benefits it's provided in opening up the Red Hill Valley Commercial Prestige Industrial Park for many new investments that have come to our community, besides the jobs and taxes, but the quality of life issues. My constituents on Eastmount, I've said it before, I'll continue to say it, the heavy truck route ban off the Kenilworth Access could never have been possible if the Red Hill Valley Parkway had not- the Red Hill Valley Parkway had not been open. But once the Parkway opened, it made all the sense in the world for Council Marula's area and mine to be able to support, and with council's approval, the heavy truck route ban off of the Kennelworth Access and provide that quality of life for the residents of both the East Mountain and the East End of the city as well. Um, so, Madam Deputy Mayor, I'm very pleased that this is a comprehensive, uh, recommendation moving forward. It also recommends that we refer this matter to the overall development of the transportation master plan of the city of Hamilton that's taken into all modes of transportation across our community. But again, Madam Deputy Mayor, kudos to Council Connolly. Uh, we can either be ostriches and put our heads in the sand and pretend that the, uh, the, uh, the demand and the popularity and the usage of the Red Hill Valley Parkway and Lincoln Alexander Parkway are going to go down in the future. That's really putting, uh, your head in the sand like an ostrich. Or you can, um, accept and recognize that approximately 70,000 vehicles a day use these two parkways. And imagine if we rewound the tape and we had never built these, that 70,000 vehicles would have been on many of our lovely residential roads. So I'm strongly supportive of what's here today. Thanks, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Jackson. Councilor Marula.
Thank you, um, Madam Deputy Mayor. And let me start off by saying that I supported the road, as everyone knows, and I did so in the face of the fact that the majority of the residents that I served didn't support it at the time, but actually do now, unlike those that spoke previously to me. So it's a lot easier when, when all your residents support an issue, to support it. And I supported it strongly because I believed in, in what it would do for the city, and it's come to fruition. The reality is, however, we're at a point that clearly staff has, have identified that increasing the capacity of that road will only exasperate the problem at this point, until the province addresses both the congestion at the 403 and the congestion at the Q E W in the East End. I happen to drive down Woodward every single morning to walk my dogs at Woodward Park or at, uh, the Globe Park, and I can assure you that I see that traffic congestion on Woodward backing up. They're trying to circumvent the, the Red Hill in order to get to the Q E W via Woodward. So I'm, I'm experiencing the same problem. But to basically state, let's just increase the lanes at this point without having the province commit firstly and foremost the increase of capacity, is not maybe, some people think we have our head in the sand, that's having your head up your butt, because you're, you're actually going to be spending tens of millions of dollars to actually make the problem worse, rather than solving the problem. So I'm here to solve problems, not create more problems. But what's also with, what's really interesting is that we're not sure if we're sucking or blowing on this issue, because we have this crisis in speeding on, on the Link and the Red Hill, and now we have this crisis of congestion. So we're not quite sure, uh, if we're having, uh, a problem with congestion, or if we have a speeding issue, should we have red, uh, red light cameras, or should we expand the highway to make even more of our speeding issue? So we need to assess this, as staff have, and identified it from an engineering perspective, not from a political, let's feel warm and fuzzy perspective. And clearly, at this point, it's not advantageous to pursue this, clearly. And also, as many of you remember, I brought forward a motion to toll the particular highways for non-residents, particularly American trucks coming from Michigan, using it as a shortcut. So if we're going to spend millions of dollars at the expense of the local taxpayer to accommodate Michigan truckers, I think this, that the highway should be a, a Series 400 highway and not paid for at the, on the backs of our hard-working residents at the municipal level. Shidock Expressway, which is now the 403, um, is paid by the province. It's a, it's a 400 series highway. And there's no reason why the Link and the Red Hill shouldn't be either. Hence, before we start tripping over ourselves to spend money for, to make the problem worse, let's analyze this in a very intelligent manner that's conducive to solving the problem, not exasperating the problem, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Councilor Marula, and we do appreciate your comments. Just a gentle reminder, this is not the U.S. presidential debates, and we do have a little bit more of a professional conduct around the council thing. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, what are you referring to exactly?
Just your, your comments, I would appreciate.
Which one exactly? I'm sorry.
Well, there were a few which I don't want to...
I, I stand by every single comment, so I'm not quite sure what you're referring to.
Well, I, I think that if you think about certain language, I think the tone...
No, no, I need to know explicitly what you mean.
Well, sucking and blowing and, and, uh...
Sucking and blowing, I'm sorry. What's wrong with sucking and blowing?
And head up your butt is some, is probably a tone I wouldn't use around the council chambers.
Well, that's your problem. I, I'll speak to you.
Thank you, and I am Chair, and I'm just reminding you gently that we show more respect around the table. Thank you very much. And our next speaker on the list...
Well, sucking and blowing is a terminology that's perfectly acceptable, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Is Counselor Connolly.
Oh, thank you. Most of what I was going to say has been said, you know, um, but, except for some of the comments that weren't, uh, supposed to be said here. Um, the reality is, I mean, there is a reality, this, these roads are 10 and 15 years old, and the reality is, the number of cars, because of approved plans that we've done, have increased significantly. Um, my ward has got probably, I haven't counted, four to 5,000 more houses than there was when this road was built, probably more. Um, Bimbrook has probably got 10,000 more houses than it was when it was built. It was never built, I don't think, for, to get 70,000 cars going through it. I know when it first opened, the reality, the reality was, it's going to be 13,000 cars a day on it, and the first day, I think there was 27,000 cars, as I recall. I could be wrong in those figures, but it was way more than what was predicted. I do agree, though, until we fix the pinch points, the one in the West End and the one in the East End, um, it's not going to solve too many problems. But we really got to put our heads together and really push the ministry. A letter doesn't do anything, but we got to push the ministry to get these fixed, you know? Um, it's so important to the livelihood. We've just approved in the last year another 2,000 houses in my ward. 2,000. How many cars is that? It's probably 3,000 to 4,000 cars, if you, if you look at the numbers. And all along the highway, they're, they're putting new housing in. So it is a reality. I know, I know I pushed for widening the road, and I still believe it, but I do, uh, understand that if you can't get off the highway, it's just going to make more chaos on them. But the number of cars are coming. You know, we're not going to take cars off, no matter what's there now, and with, even with the pinch points, the cars are still coming, because the houses are coming. And, and it's just common sense. The LRT's not going up Centennial Highway, so we can't take the people off that. You know, it's not, it's not helping us at all. We need better roads, or wider roads and wider, um, points at each end. So I, I think it's a one-two hit. Number one is to get the extensions done in, in the West End and in the, the East End of the QE, and then have a plan, when they're done, to continue the expansion and get six lanes in. So I'm really grateful that we're putting this in, but I really hope it's a priority and not just a, oh, let's just do it and satisfy some councillors, and, because that's not the point. It's to make the city the best city we can, and I think that's all part of it. You know, it's part of the transportation, and I, I hope you can, um, uh, support this, but really put an effort in, um, put our heads together and see if we can move this along as quick as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Connolly. Counselor Green.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And I, um, I, I remember distinctly, in fact, when we had our day at Queen's Park, Hamilton Day, both councillors, Ferguson and Whitehead, passionately lobbying Minister Del Duke at the time on these pinch points. We know the residual effects that it has in the flow-through traffic. We've heard delegations here in both Aiden and, and Counselor Farr's ward related to some of the down pressures on the Q E W, but, uh, the 403. But through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, to Chris. Chris, I understand that there is, preventually at least, a conversation being had on goods movement. Uh, it, would you care to comment just on the work that kind of you've done on that preliminarily and where the province is at with that?
Sure. Through you, Chairman. The, um, so working with Peel, Halton, KW, and Niagara, uh, CAOs, we, uh, we, uh, we discussed with MTO the need for better coordination amongst, uh, goods movement planning in Southern Ontario. Uh, certainly has affected our, our municipalities directing, directly, because our concern was, is that a lot of these highway corridor planning exercises will be done very much in a piecemeal manner. And so there was a very positive response from the province, and I think it occurred roughly about a year ago, and I've asked them to come to our council to update us on where they're at, uh, in terms of this long-range goods movement strategy. So it definitely includes, uh, a look at the Q E W, it includes a look at the 403, and, and, and certainly would involve other modes of moving goods, uh, not just highways. So, um, and it would, of course, look at the Niagara to, um, to, to Toronto corridor. So, um, that work is, is underway. It's in, in, in its infancy, really. Um, I think what, what would probably be helpful for this, uh, committee would be a presentation, uh, from, uh, MTO as to what the overall process looks like and, and how best we can get involved. But in the interim, you still have the here and now problems of the 403 and Q E W. Um, and so, uh, you know, all the points that have been made by committee, I, I certainly understand. Um, and I, I don't think you can wait, uh, you know, 20, 30 years to see something happen when you're experiencing the problems you are today. So, um, I just thought, and I appreciate the question from the council, just to give you some, uh, assurance that the province is looking into a long-range plan.
Well, I appreciate that, Chris. I remember hearing, uh, about that work that you had, uh, done there, and, um, and I think it might hopefully the update give us a little bit more of a perspective, but I know, if I remember correctly, and without putting words in his mouth, Council Ferguson has certainly been after this for quite some time now. I remember him waving the emails that probably date back a few terms, and so, uh, i- in terms of this being a priority, I would agree that the pinch points in particular, until we get that solved, as has already been sent around the table. But when that is solved, we'll also really release the pressure off of our flow-through traffic, the residents on the mountain coming downtown to get, and, and likewise. And so I support any initiative, I'll say that right now, to lobby the province to, to fix those pinch points and, um, and certainly back up the work of, uh, Whitehead and Ferguson on that, to get that solved, and, and hope to hear back from the MTO that they've made those considerations. And then, in fact, obviously, the opportunity will, will present itself when they're here to raise that in a, in a very, uh, um, prioritized way, that that's something that will relieve pressures for us. And, uh, appreciate the comments around the table and look forward to supporting.
Thank you, Counselor Green. No further comments. Item four. Counselor Whitehead, may I please have a motion to approve the report as presented and receive the information section?
You, you certainly can. Moved by myself and second by Counselor Don Skelly that the 16th report of the Public Works Committee be adopted as amended and the information section received.
All those in favor? The Planning Committee presents Report 16-017 and respectfully recommends item one. Counselor Marula, I understand you have an amendment to item two.
I do indeed, and it's moved by myself, second by Counselor Brenda Johnson, that item two of the Planning Committee, and it's before you, and it's, um, it's a request from an individual that lives in Counsel Johnson's area, but, uh, has a property in, um, in my area, on Queenston Road. And after meeting with staff and, and having an understanding that there would be a legal non-conforming situation at that present address, uh, we left the meeting without any action or intending to have any action. However, uh, the resident took it a step further, investigated the issue, and apparently, uh, this is required, and it's not, it is, it is not a not-conforming situation or legal non-conforming situation. So through you, Madam Chair, um, I'm not sure if...
Joanne's here.
Joanne is here. Great. I'll go and check. If Joanne, if you could just elaborate on that, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Um, through you, Madam Chair. Uh, Counselor Marula is right. We had met with the landowner with respect to this property. There were a number of options. She has a motor vehicle repair shop at Planning Committee. She just wanted confirmation of the legal non-conforming status, as many of you members remember. Then she wanted, she saw that another individual had a specific exception, she wanted to pursue that. She also, in conversation with us, wanted to pursue actually having her property removed from the transit-oriented corridor zoning entirely, and then her property would be addressed through the next stage of our commercial mixed-use project, and that she would be incorporated into that project. So the recommendation before you is to do that. She has a property that, it, it's a very short block, and I think there's about three or four properties on that very short block, and she would have one zone, and the rest of the block would have another zone. So based on all the options, it suggested that she actually be removed from the top one zoning and then be referred to the CMU process at the next stage, which will conclude in 2017.
So through you, Madam Chair. Um, Joanne, so in essence, it's just protecting the, the existing use perpetually, uh, as a auto mechanic, is that correct?
Through you, Madam Chairman, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you, Counselor Marula. Counselor Brenda Johnson.
Yeah, and thanks, Joanne, for that, because, um, I don't know if this, this resident actually does live in my ward. It's because I was the chair of planning that day, she approached me, because as Joanne said, previously, there was a planner on, at the dais who was asking for the property in question for the side yard to be referred to as the front yard or vice versa. So I, and then afterwards came up to me and said I was very nervous speaking, and I should have asked for this same consideration, that this would be a property that would be in stone, that it would always be, um, what the use is right now. So absolutely correct. It was, uh, told at the time from the Planning Committee that the property would always be legal non-conforming and, and that the use could continue on forever and a day. So I just wanted to touch base on that and, and why I'm, I'm actually, um, supporting this motion, because the property can be used up until the time they choose to change the use of it, and then they have to follow the proper zoning, uh, that's been put into place. So I just wanted to explain. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. No further questions. Item two is amended, carried. Uh, item three, uh, let's start with Counselor Jackson. I apologize, Madam Clerk.
Sorry, perhaps I didn't catch it. Did you vote on the amendment first and then the motion as amended?
And the motion as amended. On the motion, Counselor Whitehead.
Could I just ask, uh, staff, um, the comprehensive zoning bylaw, this is along the corridor, um, I got a lot of businesses along Upper James, uh, Rymel, et cetera. Uh, we've been told for years and years and years that the comprehensive zoning bylaw would be done within the next year, and it just keeps getting bumped out. So, uh, understanding limited resources that we have, have, has to be in a delay on the comprehensive zoning bylaw, urban, as a result of this particular process.
Through the Chair, the, the overall comprehensive zoning bylaw review has been delayed. I think one of the causes of that was when we were doing the rural zoning bylaw, we did end up going back, um, actually several times to do additional rounds of public consultation. Um, so that has affected our overall work plan. In terms of rolling out the commercial mixed-use zoning, um, we've done that in phases. Um, the, uh, the next phase will be going out, uh, to public meetings, um, imminently. I believe the dates have been established. I can't think of them off the top of my head, but I believe they're taking place through November, um, uh, sorry, through October, and then coming to, uh, committee and council in the spring for adoption for commercial mixed-use zoning citywide.
So help me, uh, the, the question, I understand the rule hiccup, but, uh, help me understand, because there's a lot of, uh, people ready to invest and waiting, uh, for their, uh, projects either to come into compliance or not have to apply for rezoning. Uh, and, uh, so the question really is, uh, understanding that we have limited capacity, limited staffing, and that, uh, the urban comprehensive zoning bylaw is a, a priority, um, certainly, uh, on the interior road networks. Have we sucked up resources from that process in any way to accommodate this report that's before us here today?
Through the Chair, I don't, I don't believe so. We, we're, we're generally on time in terms of the overall commercial mixed-use. We, we did elect to do this piece in advance of doing the broader commercial mixed-use zoning. Um, that's the sequence we opted to go with, and, uh, one of the reasons for that was we all saw under a timeline under the interim control bylaw that council passed this time last year, um, that required the completion of this by, um, by the end of this month, um, in order to, to, uh, comply with the, uh, the deadline of the interim control bylaw, which can only be in place for one year.
Yes, I certainly appreciate the timeline. Uh, I just want to remind my, uh, my colleagues and staff that when you have people sitting on money that they want to invest in this community and create jobs, and they're frozen that they want to invest in this community and create jobs, and they're frozen out because of delay after delay after delay, it gets a bit frustrating, since in one case, the individuals just moved to Leveux Branford. So I'm a bit frustrated that we're losing opportunity because of these extended delays on the comprehensive zoning bylaw. I understand the priority here in respect to being the interim bylaw timelines, but it is very frustrating to see money, because this we won't see in place or generating revenue in the immediate timeframe. But there is opportunity to have money and jobs coming to this community more immediately. And yet we continue delaying that process. So please do everything we can to finally get it done.
Thank you, councillor Whitehead. Any further comments or questions? We'll now vote on item two as amended. All those in favor?
Carried.
Carried. Item three. Councillor Jackson.
Madam Deputy Mayor, this is elevators in multi-story residential buildings. Once again, another great grassroots initiative by our seniors advisory committee, 20 volunteer members from across our city that councillor Brenda Johnson and I have the privilege of serving on, that the property standards bylaw be amended to specify that in order to maintain elevator may include the requirement that signs be installed, providing the occupants of the building the contact information of not only the property owner and manager, but the City of Hamilton Municipal Law Enforcement Section as well to call when elevators are inoperative or otherwise not maintained. Madam Deputy Mayor, if you recall, back on March 30th of this year, council adopted an amendment to the property standards bylaw for elevators. If you recall, small buildings, apartment buildings, six stories or less, didn't even have a requirement to have an elevator operating at all times. We changed that, so that now at least one elevator, if not more, have to be operative at all times, operable. And here we are now, if you recall, seniors advisory committee recommended unanimously that we look at some form of signage, so that many of the tenants, they will now have the ability with signage right in front of the elevators to contact either the property owner, the landlord, the manager, superintendent, or the City of Hamilton Municipal Law Enforcement, if ever at any given time the elevators are not operating properly, obviously with a multi-story building. And it's not just for seniors apartment buildings, I want to make that clear, this is for any apartment buildings across our city. But, as you can imagine, a lot for seniors who, if they had to climb a number of floors to get to their apartment if the elevators weren't operating at all times, that would be a horrendous hardship on them physically and possibly medically. So I want to thank Marty Hazel's division, and particularly Robert Eustrikey, the property manager, who's worked on this elevator file to fruition. Thanks, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Jackson. Any further comments or questions? Item three. Councillor Brenda Johnson, may I please have a motion to approve the report as amended and receive the information section?
Thank you, you will. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Doug Conley, that the 17th report of the Planning Committee be adapted and as amended and the information section received.
Thank you, councillor. All those in favor?
Carried.
Carried. The General Issues Committee presents report 16-023 and respectfully recommends item one. Item two. Mayor Eisenberger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just wanted to speak to this issue of our people and performance plan that was put together by our very capable staff, led by Chris Murray, who's celebrating a birthday today. Happy birthday, Christopher.
Happy birthday.
They roll in the cake. Oh, no, no, there's no cake. Congratulations. I'm sure there'll be a cake later somewhere along the line, but congratulations. And awesome and terrific work done by our very own Helen Hale Tomasic, our director of human resources. One thing we should say right at the outset, that this is Helen's last council meeting. After a long career with the City of Hamilton, you know, exemplary work in many different departments, culminating in her directorship of the Human Resources Department, I think she has served our community spectacularly well, and in the end of it, has left us a legacy document in terms of how we're going to treat our employees and inspire our employees going into the future. So Helen, congratulations on your upcoming retirement, soonish, but thank you for all of your great work in the City of Hamilton. I think it's meritorious. So, Madam Chair, this document is actually a roadmap created collectively with staff and employees in terms of how we are going to perform and respect our staff and inspire them to improve or to have good performance in our organization. And it's actually headed under five main categories, which I think says it all in terms of what this document means to our organization, that we will promote effective leadership, we will promote healthy, respectful and supportive workplace, that we will support continuous learning as an organization, and performance excellence and accountability, as well as enabling good, positive and ongoing communications with all of the employees of this corporation. You know, like most organizations, we are only as good as the people that work for this organization, and how we treat them, and how we respect them, and encourage them to perform at their very best, and give them opportunity to improve not only themselves, but their lives through their employment here, as well as serving our wonderful and great community, as they also ably do, is, I think, a very important effort. So I just want to compliment our staff for heading in this direction, putting it in a document that I think can be shared publicly, both online and with all of our staff. And I think it really does, I think, reflect a culture that respects our employees, appreciates them for what they do, and will continue to do that going into the future. So I just want to say, excellent document, excellent effort to create a roadmap. And again, thank you to Helen Hale Tomasic for her fantastic work bringing this to us. It's a brilliant legacy for her to leave behind as she leaves our organization, and it will be long remembered as, I think, a guiding post-document for us as we lead our organization into future years of, hopefully, great work in our broader community. So just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And of course, Helen, all of council echoes the mayor's comments. We wish you nothing but the best in the years ahead, and a very happy birthday to Chris. You look great for 42.
I'm 42.
Yeah. You don't want to qualify for a seniors discount. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor of item two? Item three? Item four? Item five? Item six? Item seven? Item eight? Item nine? Item 10? Item 11? Item 12? Item 13? Mayor Eisenberger, may I please have a motion to approve the report as presented and receive the information section?
Yes, councillor. This is moved by myself, seconded by councillor Robert Pazuta, that the 23rd report of the General Issues Committee be adopted as presented and information section received.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All those in favor?
Carried.
The Audit Finance and Administration Committee presents report 16-014 and respectfully recommends item one. Councillor Jackson.
Madam Deputy Mayor, just on the minutes, please, that were present, I'm not on committee, but I was present at the meeting because item five was particularly a matter that I brought before committee through councillor Aiden Johnson. I just want that to be corrected, please. Thank you.
Thanks, you, Madam Clerk. Do we need an amendment? No. Oh, sorry, councillor Pazuta.
I too had attended the meeting. I'm not recording on here.
Madam Clerk, you've taken note, councillor Pazuta and councillor Jackson. All the, all right. Item one? Item two? Item three? Item four? Councillor Partridge.
Yes, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. And I just have some questions. This is regarding the payment processing. And I'm just, for the benefit of those that are listening, I'm just going to read this out a bit. It's that staff be directed to single-source the payment processing provider, which would be Maneras through the RBC, to consolidate the current payment processing contracts with the objective that the new fee structure would be below the current structure for the same term at the city's financial institution contract with the Royal Bank of Canada. And if I may, just a question through to Mike. Mike, first of all, appreciate the time you met with councillor Pazuta and myself. And I'm just, I'm just a little concerned about this. I have this, you know, with single sourcing, I'm working with procurement on bringing forward a motion to kind of tighten up the gaps that we have around that single sourcing. Can you just provide an explanation for this, please?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. First off, I just want to recognize staff. So this is an opportunity that staff through our cash handling review processes identified. We have approximately 106 contracts related to this particular vendor, RBC BMO, our joint owners of Maneras. Maneras are those, the point-of-sale vendor terminals that individuals use when they use their debit card or credit cards to complete a transaction. So across the city, we have approximately 106 contracts. We have approximately 150 of these devices. There is an opportunity, staff feel there is an opportunity to negotiate with the vendor in an effort to consolidate these contracts, to achieve some savings, some financial savings, but as well to leverage technology. The technology continues to evolve around the point-of-sale merchant terminals, and we see an opportunity to leverage the latest technology and in order to improve our citizenry experience as it relates to those transactions. So again, the recommendation that staff identified was to negotiate with the vendor and in an effort to try to align this contract with banking contracts. So our banking contract currently resides with RBC. There may be an opportunity to bundle these two services and to try to align the contract as really this contract with our banking contract. We did identify an RFP process as an alternative. The only risk of going with an RFP process at this time is we have some service areas, recreation, taxation, and parking services, who are pursuing online and, sorry, electronic transactions. And so they're working with the vendor to try to pursue implementation of those improvements in terms of service currently. And so to go out with an RFP process would affect those service areas, it would delay moving forward with those opportunities, again, as relates to recreation, taxation, and parking. So again, we try to balance the need for some competitiveness, and so the recommendation is to negotiate, staff's recommendation is to negotiate, an effort to negotiate improved savings, improved technology, improved reporting from the vendor, and to go out with an RFP process when we go out with our banking RFP process in four and a half years. So again, our objective is to go out with an RFP process, but to delay that for four and a half years when we go out with our banking.
Thank you. And Madam Deputy Mayor, through you, so Mike, we have, I believe you said, 106 different contracts at this point, and they're all different amounts?
So through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, we have 106 contracts and they differ. So as each service area pursued the technology, they entered into different contracts with different terms. We did have a 2002 contract with Maneras, however, that wasn't being properly managed. So we see the opportunity now in consolidating the contracts into one corporate contract to have accountability in terms of managing that contract on a go-forward basis. At Audit Finance Admin, staff did commit to, if we aren't able through the negotiation, to achieve some savings and achieve improved technology, as we would report back to Audit Finance Admin, and at that time, Audit Finance Admin Committee could direct staff to go out with an RFP process.
Mike, thank you for that answer. And I guess my concern on top of all that, and I understand, I appreciate, you know, negotiating with and trying to align it with our current bank service provider, but, you know, as my understanding, certainly the flambrill Chamber of Commerce, who, by the way, I want to thank them very much for coming in and presenting and taking the time to bring this to our attention, it's my understanding through their presentation and in conversation with them, that there's well over 100 different providers that would be specifically for this type of machine payment process. So it's not, it's not just provided through the banks, but that there are other providers who are significantly less than the bank would be. So I understand. So I'm just a little concerned that we're going to wrap ourselves up in another, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought I heard you say four additional years, that we would be in this contract, when there are other service providers out there that could be less, and wants to stop us from having our bank services with RBC, but then having, you know, separate contracts, which may be a significantly lower cost with one of the other providers. And I'm just wondering if you could speak to any kind of research that's been done into those other providers? Any comparisons?
So through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, in terms of potential vendors, there are a group of potential vendors. I'm not sure if it is in the hundreds, given that the City of Hamilton would likely want to pursue a variety of potential payment options. So typically, these contracts can vary, depending on the types of payments that you're willing to accept, that merchants are willing to accept. In the case of City of Hamilton, we want to provide for all sorts of varieties in terms of payment options. So again, there are a variety of vendors who would likely be interested in the contract. The balance that staff were trying to strike when developing the recommendation really was, we were trying not to affect parking, taxation, and recreation in the work that they are pursuing currently with the vendor as it relates to online transactions and electronic transactions. So that was the challenge we were in and the rationale why we were suggesting to negotiate for the four and a half years, as well as the potential savings as it relates to bundling this contract with the banking contract. But as the councillors identified, the outcome of that process may result in two separate vendors. There's no guarantee that if we pursue trying to bundle these two contracts that we would have the same vendor. So again, it is a possibility that at the end of the day, we would have two different vendors.
Well, thank you, Mike. And Madam Deputy Mayor, it does sound like it's going to be four years before we know that, though, and that's what concerns me. My last question is, again, to Mike. Is procurement signed off on this? Are they okay with single sourcing this?
So through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, procurement was consulted. They understand what staff identified in terms of objectives, and so again, they were consulted and they were okay with the recommendations of the report.
So they did sign off on this?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, yes.
Okay. And thank you for that. And Madam Deputy Mayor, when I look under the discussion items, there was an additional C put into the recommendations, that staff be directed to report back to Audit Finance and Administration Committee respecting the results of the negotiations prior to the contract being awarded to Maneras. So I do take some comfort in that, but again, I'm not entirely pleased with the single sourcing, and I certainly look forward to working with procurement. We've already had two meetings on this to put a motion together to just tighten up that whole process. Those are my comments, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Partridge. Any further comments or questions? Item four? Item five? Councillor Jackson.
Just want to thank Madam Deputy Mayor, the AFNA Committee chaired by councillor Aiden Johnson, who was gracious enough to move this motion to bring three new doctors to the Eastmount community, and I want to thank finance staff for their input on my motion, particularly Joe Spiler, and I'm pleased with the unanimous recommendation that's here before us tonight. Thanks, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Jackson. Councillor Aiden Johnson, may I please have a motion to approve the report as presented? Oh, item five. Councillor Aiden Johnson, may I please have a motion to approve the report as presented and receive the information section?
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Farr, oh, pardon me, I'm reading the wrong thing out. Seconded by councillor Farr, that the 14th report of AFA be adopted as presented and the information section received.
All those in favor? Mr. Mayor, it's yours.
Great job, councillor Skelly. You're first in the chair at council, so well done. I know you have the sniffles, and I'm sure you'll get over that. Could I turn to councillor Jackson, please? A motion to have the committee of the whole Rising report.
Your worship, you may always turn to me. Moved by myself and seconded by Ward Seven councillor, the deputy mayor, Donna Skelly, that the committee of the whole Rising report.
Thank you. All in favor?
Carried.
Councillor Green, you have a motion on respecting a Hamilton Home Energy Retribution. Councilor Green, you have a motion on respecting a Hamilton Home Energy Retribution opportunity.
For you, Mr. Mayor, but I will say that there had been some questions of members of council. So at this point, I'd like to refer this to GIC and allow Environment Hamilton, who's here today, and some others to come and actually delegate on the fullness of this, even before it goes to feasibility, just so that everybody can understand what it is we're voting on. I don't want to rush this in any way. So even though it's just a feasibility report, I think there's a better opportunity to be had by having Environment Hamilton, some others come and speak to this motion.
Okay. So it's moved by yourself, seconded by Councilor Farr, that we refer this to GIC. Next available to GIC, or?
Uh...
If possible, if possible.
If possible, yes.
We'll find the date. Yeah, okay. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Councilor Johnson, you have a notice of motion. Could you please present that? And I understand you need to waive the rules.
Yeah, I have a notice of motion and a motion for waiver of rules. So may I go first with my motion for waiver?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yep.
Is it on the water?
So moved by yourself, seconded by, in terms of waiving the rules, moved by yourself, seconded by Councilor Farr, all in favor to waive the rules? Carrie, Councilor Johnson.
Thanks. And I'll read it out and then talk about it.
In your yellow pages, actually. Yep. Okay, go ahead.
So the text of the motion is this, that the City of Hamilton endorses Indwell Community Homes in its efforts to achieve the ambitious targets for environmental sustainability set out in the City of Hamilton's Community Climate Change Action Plan, approved at the October 28, 2015 meeting of council, in particular through adopting passive house design strategies for its upcoming housing projects in Wards Two and Four, and that the city anticipates, working with Indwell, to explore new building technologies and relevant supporting strategies to enable local and national action on climate change, acknowledging the role of the charitable, private, and public sectors, including research through our universities, Natural Resources Canada, and industry partners. And if I may speak to this, Mr. Mayor, so very significant point, this is not a money motion, no funding is being requested, no funding is being contemplated. This came about because my very beautiful and brilliant constituent, Graham Cubot, who many of you will know through Indwell and others will know through the mustard seed co-op in Ward One, is applying for a grant in his capacity as, I believe, Director-Chair of Indwell, and indicated that an official endorsement from the City of Hamilton for the work of Indwell Housing, which we all know does such incredible work, would be a very useful thing to have as part of his application. And that is how this motion came to be, and here we are, and I would ask for your support. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions? Councilor Ferguson.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with who Indwell is. Now, with the mover, could you just refresh my memory on that, who they are? And second, what's the time sensitivity to this? Indwell?
I'd ask the mover to answer it.
Councilor Farr?
They have about six to seven properties in Ward Two. They're a great housing provider, generally working, in fact, probably mostly working with housing with supports on that side of the affordable housing continuum. They do terrific, terrific work. I can speak to Ward Two, never a complaint, always very helpful, and always very innovative, which this speaks to in the form of a council endorsement, an opportunity for them to have a better chance at accessing some grant money for this passive house design. I've been working closely with them on a project in the North End that would be just that, and it's really remarkable stuff and stuff we can learn from and charitable moving forward, whether we're City Housing Hamilton or other housing providers. So they're very well-versed, very well-schooled, and very well-respected.
Councilor Ferguson?
Time sensitivity? Why are we brushing this through council and through committee?
Because the grant deadline is end of October.
Okay. And my last question, just to make sure we have our bases covered, through you if I can, to Janice. Janice, by supporting one particular bidder on this, are we putting ourselves at risk with others, or is it they came to us, nobody else did?
Yeah. I'm trying to think of the answer.
Jason, do you have any more information on that in terms of how it came to be?
So through the chair, I can say that, to my knowledge, we haven't been approached by anybody else to support an application. I'm not aware if there's any other applications coming in from the City of Hamilton. If there are, then they haven't contacted myself or my department for a supporting resolution the way that Indwell has.
Thanks, thank you.
So you don't think that we're on the risk of being sued by supporting one particular bidder, not the others, if there is others? I just want to make sure that we're protecting the taxpayer here.
Okay, so we're going back to legal now in terms of that question, Janice?
So I think what I could say is, through the mayor, based on Jason Thorne's comments, it wouldn't appear to me that we would be exposing the city. It would not appear to me that we would be exposing the city.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Ferguson? Thank you. Councilor Whitehead?
Well, the question was asked about the organization. I've had the pleasure of working with Indwell and Jeff on the Working Group for Residential Care Facilities, and incredible individual, credible organization. I know they've done some great work in Ward, a number of wards, Two and Three as well, and Four, the recent one, and Four. And I have visited some of their sites as well. So I, and I think so highly of them, that I'm going to be asking, and there will be a motion coming forward, the school board is declaring Mountain Secondary School as surplus. And I know Indwell is very interested in doing something there, and of course, that's the code-red neighborhood, Yoelville and Rolston, they're combined. So, and we do have a shortage of green space. Actually, there's, other than that school, there's no park in Yoelville at all, zero, no park. So this would meet the criteria for the city to prioritize the purchase of the property, work with Indwell, and have best of two worlds, providing a service as badly needed in that neighborhood, and two, providing some, preserving some green space so that the community isn't at a complete loss. So great organization, and I wouldn't be taking that kind of step if I didn't believe in them.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilor Marula?
Just quickly, I'm not going to say I'm surprised that people aren't familiar with Indwell, but I am kind of, only because we've partnered with them on a number of fronts in Ward Four dating back to 2005, the Perkins Center, the Strathern Development just opened up, as well as the Rudy Center. So we've partnered with them financially in conjunction with the province. They provide a level of affordable housing that is the most difficult to provide. As you know, there are different levels of affordable housing, and as housing prices increase throughout this city, there's going to be even more levels of affordable housing that needs to be addressed. They happen to deal with some of the most challenging, and they have internal resources as well. So they have a proven track record, from my perspective and my community's perspective beyond comprehension. And actually, they just closed the deal on a new development in Ward Four, the old George and Mary's, and they're taking a decrepit building and again, turning that building around, that blight, into something far more productive than that corner has ever seen. So as a result, I just wanted to publicly state my support for Indwell and what they have done, not only for Ward Four, but clear across the city, and actually, in all fairness, the province, because there are another municipalities throughout the province as well. And I appreciate your time.
Great. Thank you very much for those comments. Councilor Partridge?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my question is on this, can I just get some clarity? Because I thought I heard that the endorsement was time-sensitive because they needed the endorsement for some funding application. But it doesn't say anything about a funding application in this motion. Well...
Councilor Johnson?
I understand you regret it, but I'm wondering why?
No particular reason. I think it would be, I don't think it would ban Jacks anything to add a line to the amendment stating this is for the purpose of a grant application. I'm happy to do that if the counselor thinks that's a good amendment.
And I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, very much. It's just if we're dealing with motions, and we really need to be dealing with the, exactly what the motion is meant for. So if we're voting on something with a pretty important component missing, then it's misleading, I think, for, I mean, certainly for myself as a counselor. So thank you for providing that clarity, because I would like to see that rewritten. I'm also just a little bit concerned, you know, I get requests that come into my office quite often, if I would provide letters of support for charitable organizations. And we have some amazing charitable organizations, and there's no question in my mind. I'm not as familiar with Indwell as you are. I'm more familiar with Habitat for Humanity and some of the others that I've worked with, but I'm not as familiar with this one. So I'm uncomfortable that the council endorses, individual counselors, absolutely. I think we, you know, we all do it all the time. But to actually ask for a council resolution, sorry, endorsement, not resolution, but endorsement, I'm not particularly comfortable with that for a number of reasons. But at the end of the day, I think the one point that's missing that I've already referenced would require a rewrite. So I'm wondering if I'd like to refer it back, or table it, or whatever the term, the proper term would be, Madam Clerk? So we would have an opportunity to rewrite this and then have it come forward.
Okay, thank you for those comments. I mean, I would imagine there's a timeline issue, so let me turn back to Councilor Johnson.
I did hear that, certainly, yes.
Could we, on the fly, maybe put some wording on paper that you can read as part of this motion? That would address that issue?
So I deeply appreciate what Councilor Partridge has said. I don't want to open problematic doors in terms of, you know, setting bad precedents. So I appreciate her concern. That said, I don't see this as a terrible dark precedent, and I'll leave it at that. I feel strongly enough that this is a good idea, that I'm willing to leave this on the floor unless council votes to remove it from the floor. I would propose an amendment. And so procedurally, do I do that myself? A line that states, "This is for the purpose of a grant application." Is that, that would be the sentence I propose? If I could find a second, or Councilor Marula's seconding, I'll leave it at that. And if council chooses to go another way and punt this somewhere else, I'll vote against, but I will understand. Thank you.
So I still have the floor.
You do? And I'm just going to say, I'm not so sure that that's necessary. So you said you're going to, you're adding a clause that says that this is for the purpose of a grant application. You did mention a timeline issue earlier. Did you want to reflect that in that motion, just so we're clear?
I'm unsure about the date. I know it's an October date. I want to say it's October 31st, but I'd have to go through my emails. It is October 31st? So let us then state that. This is for the purpose of a grant application, the deadline for which is October 31st.
Okay.
Okay. And, Mr. Mayor, I do have the floor, and so thank you. I very much appreciate your willingness to amend it, but what grant application is it for?
It's the Natural Resources Canada. I have to dig through all of them.
Yep, it's in the motion, isn't it?
Right, and the very last sentence.
Right.
Yeah.
That is the granting source. The name of the grant?
No, 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 that's fine, as long as it's a grant application with, just so we know. I mean, otherwise, you know, we need to be voting on and understanding what we're voting on.
Yes.
So I do appreciate the amendment, which I will support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to turn to Jason for just a second, and I'll get back to the speakers list. Councilor Green's next, then Councilor Farr, and then I'll come to you, Councilor Johnson, for an amendment. Jason Thorne?
Yes, through the chair, I'm just trying to get the exact wording, but the program is the Natural Resources Canada, I believe it's the Energy Innovation Partnership?
Okay, so for the purposes of expediting, before we get to speakers, can you put that motion and then get it on as part of this recommendation? And your motion was that this is for the purposes of a grant application, deadline of which, deadline of which is October 31st, to the Natural Resources and whatever the last part of that was? Okay.
That is my second, Councilor Farr's for a...
Okay. And second it. So that's an add-on, so we'll deal with that in a moment. Councilor Green?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I certainly don't want to muddy the waters by stating the following, but I am the Chair of Community Emergency Services, and I can tell you that Indwell has been shortlisted on a, with a select group of people vetted by Community Emergency Services as it relates to housing for shovel-ready projects in the municipality. So we've endorsed them in that way already as a council and as a committee. And what I would like to say is, in fact, that I commend them on their leadership, because oftentimes when people talk about climate change, it's in such a big, broad way that you think that you're powerless in terms of making concrete changes and having concrete methods and ways to affect climate change. And so here we have a group, a nonprofit organization, which although might be nonprofit, I fight the term charity, what they do is provide dignified housing for people, not in a charitable way, but in a way that's just appropriate for people who are living, who need supports. And they do it with fantastic design. The model in nonprofits has been in the past to kind of use, you know, the cheapest materials and some of the most astir designs. But if you do have a chance to drive by, their designs actually reflect, I think, what we need to be aiming for, for condo developments across the city. If I see another stucco building go up, you know, and we have an opportunity to do things here that are a little bit more inspiring, this is exactly what they're doing. So they're at the forefront of something that's relatively new with, I'm sure, the LEEDs and the ISOs and all the different types of standards and renewables and high-efficiency methodologies. And we know, we've all talked about it, we've heard, the cost of hydro. We're going to have to start building buildings better. And we're going to have to do that, keeping in mind climate change, keeping in mind the rising cost of energy, keeping in mind all the things that we are facing in our communities. So here's a group that's gone ahead and done that. They're in the forefront. I say let's fully support them right here and right now. Let's learn from this, and let's find a way that, if they can find a practical way to implement this passive housing design, as a municipality, we should be looking at this stuff. Because we're not going to chip away at climate change just by talking about it. Eventually, we got to start doing things. So here's a group that's doing it, and they have my full support. Having said all of that, I still fully appreciate where Council Partridge was coming from and the incompleteness of the motion and not knowing. I fully support that, but this is a group that I vouch for 100% and encourage people, if they're driving along the corridor there, along Main, to check out what they've done there at Perkins. Absolutely incredible.
Rudy, the Woodstock Street?
Thank you so much for the time, and I certainly look forward to the support.
Thank you very much. Councilor Farr?
You're good? Okay. I wanted to thank Council Partridge for the catch on this, because the concerns are merited. But I wouldn't consider it misleading, it was just incomplete. So just to be fair to Councilor Johnson.
Okay. So I'm looking at a motion, I'm going to break that motion down to A, B, and C, and C is the amendment that you're putting forward. I think you've all heard the amendment, which is the timeline in terms of the application and to whom that application is to. So on the amendment, all in favor?
Carrie.
Any opposed, hearing none? On the motion as amended, all in favor?
Carrie.
Carrie, thank you very much. On another item, so traditionally, we do items of interest before we do an item that we would go into camera for, but I think there was a wish by Councilor Marula to potentially waive solicitor client privilege on an item. So with your indulgence, if that works for you, maybe we get to advance this issue, decide on what we do with that. If the council's wishes to go in camera ultimately, then we will. And if not, we'll do items of interest forthwith and go into camera later. So is that okay with members of council?
Just for point of clarity, it's related to 10.1, and it's regarding the legal opinion on motions with respect to the LRT, which included the reaffirmation motion as well as referendum, potential referendum motions. I think most of this was already discussed publicly, there's an understanding of where it's headed. I believe that this should be public, so I'll move that we make this public and waive the client solicitor privilege.
Okay, and a second here for that?
Yep.
Councilor Green? Okay, so comments on that? So we're okay dealing with this right now in terms of waiving privilege? Yes? Okay. I heard?
Can you ask me for a moment?
Not yet. No, no. Looking for folks that want to speak. So so far, I had, I think I heard you. Yes, okay. Councilor Johnson and Councilor Whitehead?
My understanding is that there's going to be a special GIC on October 25th. My first question is, why isn't this referred to that, that special GIC? So can somebody explain to me why this has been cherry-picked out instead of it all being bundled up together on October 25th?
Mr. Mayor, the 25th, on October 25th, a meeting was scheduled as a result of the reaffirmation motion I was presenting. I can assure you that I'm withdrawing that reaffirmation motion. The only purpose of that reaffirmation motion was to put us in the position where we would have two-thirds support. That is now confirmed that we have that necessity, hence it's redundant in nature, and I won't be bringing forward that motion. So there won't be a purpose for that meeting any longer.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, through you to clerks. My understanding, and in my calendar and how I've rearranged my schedule, was on October 25th we're having a special GIC. To date, it is still in my calendar, correct?
Rose?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. It's still scheduled.
Then again, I would respectfully request that this be tabled to or referred to the October 25th meeting.
Okay, thank you. So that, coming to you. Go ahead, Counselor. Yeah, so I support the tabling motion.
Yeah, so I, I support the tabling motion. The, the person that wrote the opinion, I asked him to be here. He's not. I think it's legitimate to have the lawyer that write the opinion to be able to ask them questions. He's not here. I know that our legal staff believe that it was straightforward. It might be straightforward for a lawyer, but it's certainly not straightforward for a counselor. So I support the tabling motion, and I would ask that we invite the independent lawyer to be here for any questions that may be asked.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So, uh, feel free. Counselor Partridge.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I agree. I'll be more than happy to second the motion. I think the October 25th date is in our calendar. I'm quite prepared to speak to the issue on that date, and I think we should carry forward with it. So Counselor Johnson has moved that the item 10.1 be tabled to, to the October 25th date for the discussion, for the LRT, which is in our calendars, which we have all planned for. And I won't support anything else. So I'm pleased to, to second that, but we need to have that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ferguson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I also support the deferral. And the reason why, I have the privilege of serving on the LRT Committee, so I've had all my questions answered, but I, in fairness, I heard Counselor Scully, I'm Bill Scully, saying she had a bunch of questions and have, that haven't been answered. And I don't think we can debate this till everybody has all their questions answered. We need Paul Johnson here. We need the lawyers here. So any member of council who doesn't serve in that committee has the opportunity to be able to answer questions, to know how to decide. And, and so I, I support the deferral, doing it all in one day, and then let's get Paul here, let's get the lawyer here who wrote the opinion, and any others that anybody deems is necessary to be able to answer questions that we need in order to make an informed decision.
Okay. So we have item 10.1 before us. There was a request to put forward a motion on waiving the rules, waiving privilege to deal with the issue in public session. That motion still stands. It was moved and seconded. So Counselor?
Just to be clear, we're not debating LRT. What we're debating is my motion that I'm withdrawing, which is the purpose of this. Well, we, if you read the report, that's what, if you read the report, that's what.
Wait, 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 wait. I think, I think the counselor has the floor. We don't need to debate.
It's the legal opinion on the motions with respect to the LRT as it pertains to the, the two issues, the two referend, the referendum issue. That's exactly what it is. Why would you be?
Wait, 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 wait.
Everyone knows that.
The heading on the report is.
And that's fine. And Counselor Collins understands that, and I spoke to him, and he's sick, he can't be here this evening. But having said that, this is not to debate the LRT.
Counselor Partridge.
Clearly. And I'm withdrawing my motion, so the, the purpose of that meeting was because of my motion. So now that I'm withdrawing the motion, it becomes a day, I guess, of information. There won't be an action item on the agenda. So through you, can I just clarify to Mr. Murray, with respect to the, the creation of this GIC, I brought forward a motion because of the deferrals related to the, um, the reaffirmation, to set up a special day to deal with that motion. I'm now publicly stating I have no intent of bringing forward that motion. Hence, what's the status of that meeting? It won't be related to the motion, it'll be information meeting.
Well, do. Mr. Murray?
So through you, Mr. Mayor. My understanding was the special meeting was to address the matter of the reaffirmation. So I think that's why we were scheduling it in, to have that discussion at that point in time. And so in light of the counselor pulling the motion, which I think is a procedural matter, I defer to our clerk to help me in, in understanding what exactly the next step is.
Rose?
Mr. Mayor, the matter is tabled in GIC. If it is the wish of Counselor Marula to, to lift that item, then it should be done at the GIC meeting. There is a GIC meeting next week, because that motion is in possession of the committee. So it would be a GIC jurisdiction matter, not council at this point, but Counselor Marula is indicating his intent, but I would advise that that should be done at a GIC meeting.
Okay. Counselor Marula?
Um, I'm fine with that. Okay. So based on the clerks, I have no problem deferring it, but just so you know, I'm withdrawing my motion. I don't need to, to bring it forward any longer.
Okay. So, so your motion in terms of waiving client, solicitor-client privilege you're, you're withdrawing as well?
Yeah, I'll withdraw, I'll withdraw and defer. If people want to meet next week, at the end of the day, there's no purpose for me to bring forward that reaffirmation motion.
Correct. Okay. So at the next GIC, which is in the, is it the 19th? Counselor Marula, you can put your motion then. There is a motion here to refer this item to, to a GIC meeting, so would it make sense to refer that to the next GIC meeting then in terms of, okay? All right. So, so that lends to, yeah, I know everybody's got some thoughts here. That lends to some confusion, so I'm going to, I'm going to go to Madam Clerk. So understanding from our, our city manager that your, and, and from the mover of the original motion, that the, the, the whole purpose of the meeting on the 25th was to deal with a reaffirmation motion, which Counselor Marula now has indicated he prepared to withdraw on the 19th. In terms of that, if he withdraws that motion on the 19th, what is the status of that GIC then on the 25th?
Then council or GIC committee would decide to withdraw that, that scheduled meeting.
Okay. So, so given that, so I just want to be clear now. Given that the purpose of the meeting was to deal with a reaffirmation motion, and a lot of it has been built around that, I think staff were prepared to come and do an update, but beyond that, it was all about the reaffirmation issue.
Point of order.
So given.
Point of order.
It's not a point of order.
Yeah, what is? You have, this is a point of order. The point of order is, it's in GIC's purview, and that the counselor has no power to withdraw. He can move a motion to have it withdrawn, but it's in the control of this council now, and it would be this, what makes that determination, Mr. Mayor? And that's the point of order.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. So going back to, should, should the counselor withdraw? And can, and, and in terms of the counselor's motion here, GIC ultimately will decide whether that motion is withdrawn at that point?
That's correct. It would be, it's in possession of GIC. Counselor Marula, the step would be that he would ask to have the item lifted and withdrawn, and it would be a committee decision.
Okay. Thank you. So given that then, so we'll, we'll have a decision on the 19th, so we'll go back to your motion, which I can't remember whose motion it was, but Counselor Johnson?
Um, then I'm a little bit confused, because my understanding was that the October 25th meeting was also to, to clarify a lot of things. Whether it started and spurred on because of a motion, there were a lot of questions that came out of that, and that's what instigated the 25th meeting. It wasn't the 19th meeting, it was the 25th meeting. And this is where all the, and everything we've, we've received in planning, everything we've received in AFNA, all the correspondence, it's all been referred to the October 25th meeting. So regardless of how it started, that was the intent, and that's how it was advertised. So with all due respect, I believe it needs to all go to the 25th, and it can be all dealt with at that time.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor, moved and seconded. On that, on that motion to refer this to the 25th of, of October, Counselor Whitehead.
Sorry, I heard Counselor Ferguson indicate that we have all the answers.
No, he said we don't have answers.
Did I hear, no, no. He said the LRT committee members have all the answers. I, I like to ask this question.
Okay.
I like to ask, if we have all the answers, what is the operating cost?
Now, I'm going to call a point of order.
What is the ridership? What is the transportation impacts?
Point of order. Point of order is, this is a referral motion. And so we have a referral motion. You, you mentioned a point of order. We're, we're past that now, so we're going to call a vote on that particular issue to refer this item to the October 25th meeting. One second.
So for those who haven't read this, now still in-camera report, I hope everyone will read it. It's only four pages prior to the October 25th. Understand and comprehend it prior to the 25th motion, so we can hang on to these copies until then. Can we, through you to the clerk? Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Through you to the clerk. Can we hang on to this in-camera document regarding?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes.
The legal opinion on motions with respect to the LRT?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes. Understanding that it is a confidential document still.
All right. Mr. Chair? Counselor Scully?
Thank you. Thank you. Maybe I could get clarity from council. Janice, this is a confidential document, and counselors have been, I have, this is the first time I've seen a confidential document treated in this fashion. All of the contents of this document have just been announced in public. Is it a confidential document? And have we stepped over the line in terms of releasing information?
Janice?
So through the mayor, it is provided to you under solicitor-client privilege. It's confidential, and it's in your possession. And of course, council has a prerogative of determining whether it would want to waive privilege or not, but I have been listening carefully, and there's been certainly reference to some of the contents, but I, I'm not sure that there's been any, I haven't heard any waiver of privilege, so it's still a confidential document.
Thank you. Counselor Scully?
In your opinion then, through the chair, should we not be dealing with this in-camera? This is the first time I've seen so much information on a confidential document released in this fashion.
So that, so to be fair, I mean, you're putting Janice in an awkward position. She already stated earlier that it's council's decision to either waive privilege.
We haven't waived privilege, and I'm asking.
And we have not. And so we're not dealing with the document in its totality now. We, the document has a heading which refers to what it refers to, which is a public heading. Does it, that, that is not a secret issue.
It is not a secret issue.
The rest of, the rest of the document.
May I ask counselor to, Janice, to clarify, when we, through the mayor, when we receive information that is deemed confidential through the mayor, how much of that information is permitted to be released to the public?
So to try to keep it really simple, when it's privileged because it's protected by solicitor-client privilege, the privilege belongs to the client. Council is the client. Council can waive that privilege whenever it wants. Council can look at the information and make a decision that it.
Thank you, through the chair. That's, my question's a little bit more specific. I understand that we can waive the privilege, but we have not. We have not waived the mo.
I thought so, yeah. But, but we're talking, we're talking to the document, and she's making an assessment.
I'm talking about a document.
We're not debating that part. So I'm, I'm going to rule that, that the clerk gives us an understanding of what the title of the document is that's public. Please?
It was announced at, under changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor, it was legal opinion respecting motions on the LRT.
On the LRT. And that's all we've?
On my motion.
Okay. So, okay. So now we're not, you know, I don't know that we need to get into chapter and verse. You can deal with that afterwards. Right now, we have a referral motion before us. Referral motion moves it to the 25th. Unless you want to debate the referral, the directions on that referral motion, we're going to, we're going to deal with the motion.
Mr. Mayor, do I still have the floor?
You do, you do. Not, not if I rule you out of order. Thank you very much.
Am I out of order?
And you know what? If you want to sit in the chair, you come on over here, and you take the chair for the moment now, Counselor. I'm in the chair. This is a referral motion. This is a referral motion debater.
Point of order.
No, no, not a point of order.
Okay. I challenge the chair.
All right. Challenge the chair.
Seconded by.
On what?
Look, you're indicating that she's out of order, and I said, I'm challenging the, I'm challenging you on the fact that she's out of order. Right now, right now, we're trying to clarify, right now, we're trying to clarify whether parts of this confidential information has already been released, and we, and it has, and everyone's curting the issue, but somebody threw a number out there that's in the report that hasn't been authorized to, to be released. So clearly, I had a contact from an individual that said the same thing. They already know, so somebody's talking or providing the information, and that's the concern.
A number, referring to what? I'm sorry, I'm not clear. So Madam Clerk, a referral motion.
Mr. Mayor, through you, a referral motion is not debatable except for the instructions of the referral.
Thank you. So the instructions were that it be referred to the 25th October meeting. So on those instructions, any comments or questions? Hearing not. On the motion, all in favor?
Carried.
Any opposed? Counselors Farr, Johnson, Green, Marula, and Eisenberger opposed. Okay. We'll move on to items of interest. Sorry?
Very quickly, Mr. Mayor, it's, it's relevant to what we were just discussing. Hate to be anticlimactic, but it's interesting legal stuff. Under the AFA report that we already approved is my motion, ask legal to report to AFA, to which legal, of course, reports, on the law of, of referendum generally. It is relevant to the LRT discussion we've just been having. It's, it's slightly to one side, but, but relevant. So I just want to make sure the public and colleagues know that that motion is coming forward to more legal grist for our mill. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Johnson?
So just so we all know, this remains confidential until October 25th.
This is a confidential document that remains confidential until the 25th. Correct.
And how much we keep slipping it out.
Thank you. So items of interest, I'm going to start with Counselor Whitehead.
Just for the record, that's the worst kept secret in the world. Just the voting pattern alone, I think, indicates the outcome.
Okay. No, no, let's not, let's not, for the record. And I, I do appreciate everyone's got something to say, but we've already, we've already dealt with the issue. We're now on Counselor Whitehead in terms of item of interest, and it's not LRT at[1521.36] We're now on Counselor Whitehead in terms of item of interest and it's not LRT at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the minority of council that voted against that position. That's great. It's great to see democracy working in its full force. The announcement I have, Mr. Mayor, is that I attended the Mohawk College Centre for Partnership and Innovation Groundbreaking, where they also announced the Strategic Plan Investment Fund. I believe they're gonna be, it's a new campus, it's business oriented, and my understanding is it'll be about 500 students, so clearly it's gonna create more pressure in the community. But what a proud moment to see Mohawk College taking off with these kinds of initiatives and it's great to see other levels of government recognizing the importance of the, of this institution in our community. So, got to break ground on that given day and it was a good crowd and again, I want to thank the federal government and certainly the provincial government in the past for their continued support. I attended the 150th episode party for Cable 14's The Old Show with Lauren Lieberman and Laura Babcock at the Aberdeen Tavern. I want to thank them, they continue to provide good dialogue and information for anyone that watches and they both really do care about this community and I want to thank Cable 14 for their continued support of the program, because clearly, without their volunteerism and their support, these kind of programs wouldn't be televised into our homes. I also want to thank, I attended the State of the Neighborhoods and I guess, I think it was orchestrated by Maureen Wilson, if I'm correct. And I know the mayor was on the hot seat for a while, did incredible job, good, good group of people. I was surprised to see a number of buttons that were pretty flagrantly flying on people's lapels. It's clear that this is a great initiative that started with the Cold Red Series and the Community Foundation with their partnership, Social Planning Research Council and the funds that they provided to help empower neighborhoods and I feel that these kind of forums where they meet their councillors or mayor and talk about just broader issues are very helpful and encourage him to continue recruiting. And I think that was the message the mayor had indicated one of the questions. You can never stop recruiting, because people move, lose interest, so it's an ongoing challenge for many of these neighborhood associations and it was good advice put forward by the mayor. I want to allow the residents to share ideas, I got the event allowed to residents to share ideas and discuss the future of Hamilton's many neighborhoods. It was a pleasure to attend. I also, Mr. Mayor, I do have a West Cliff meeting coming up, I believe it's on Saturday the 22nd, it's not here. I won't be there, but my staff will be there to take individuals who want to come forward and have issues and concerns, they will be noting those concerns. I, in fact, will be at a conference in a way for the, for that week. So I certainly want to announce to the clerks, and I think my staff has already covered that off, and Arlene Vanabik will be chairing the Public Works Committee and I know I have three or four motions that were originally scheduled to go to that Public Works meeting. One was topical and thank you to Andrew Dresch, it was in the article today and I want to extend a great level of gratitude and support, because we can agree to disagree, but it's how we agree and disagree is important. And it's great to see that no matter what side of an issue you are around this horseshoe, we can look at issues and look for ways to resolve them in a very constructive and positive way. So, I want to personally extend my thank you to Counselor Aiden Johnson and Counselor Farr for their generous comments and certainly that motion will be coming forward, it won't be at the next Public Works meeting, it will be at the subsequent one as well as the other motions that Counselor Ferguson alluded to regarding stop signs and so forth. So, thank you very much, Commissioner Mayor, for the opportunity.
Thank you very much for those comments and certainly we would encourage that kind of magnanimous supportive behavior to continue on all issues concerning our council. Counselor Scully, no, Counselor Jackson?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Four public service announcements. Tomorrow night, Good Shepherd Harvest Dinner, it's been an annual tradition, be over 800 people attending at Carmen's Banquet Hall at 6:00 PM. Congratulations and kudos to the committee made up of Kathy Wellwood, Ed Dunn, Brother Richard McPhee and the entire committee. Good Shepherd Harvest Dinner goes to great causes of helping those most in need tomorrow night, Thursday night, October 13th at 6:00 PM at Carmen's. Secondly, Mr. Mayor, I know that a number of us have many restaurants and pubs in our wards in this city that often put on fundraisers for good causes and we probably wouldn't have enough time to mention them all, but I just want to specifically mention the Brown Barrel up in my area on Upper Ottawa Street, same side as Michelangelo's Banquet Hall, just down the road from there, from Michelangelo's, the Brown Barrel between Stone Church and Reimel. If you recall, the LeBlanc family from the devastating fire that lost family members, the Brown Barrel is putting on a fundraiser. I want to congratulate and thanks so much owners Owen and Lou for putting on this fundraiser. It'll be on literally all day, Sunday, October 16th, from 1:00 in the afternoon to 10:00 PM. I'm providing some support and some door prize donations from my office and just wanted to thank them and encourage as many people as possible to come out to the Brown Barrel on October 16th from 1:00 to 10:00. Another great advocate and volunteer in my community, Mr. Mayor, Carol Agnew, who just volunteers and gives so much of herself to helping others. She's putting on a fundraiser for autism on Saturday, October 22nd, from 5:00 to 11:00 PM at the Royal Canadian Legion Branch 163 on the mountain on Upper Wentworth across from Lymerich Mall. So that's Saturday, October 22nd from 5:00 to 11:00 PM. Please give Carol a call to buy tickets, great fundraiser for autism, 905-574-2939, that's 574-2939, or 905-308-2439, that's 308-2439. And lastly, Mr. Mayor, I know this is an event that you, myself, and many members of council enjoy going to, and that will be the 96th Annual Chrysanthemum Show and Fall Garden Show here at our Gage Park Greenhouses. The opening night, of course, with the Trillium Awards, that many of our constituents, both residential and commercial, are up for awards, both white, pink, and ultimately the red trillium, will be Thursday, October 20th at 6:00 PM at the Gage Park Greenhouses. And thereafter, from October 21st right through to October 30th inclusive, will be the Mum Show 96th Edition and the theme this year is Mardi Gras. And there's gonna be added entertainment, Mr. Mayor, jazz, blues fest, lots of brews, lots of wines, barbecue, great evening of, lots of evenings and afternoons of many activities. So, I want to thank so much Neil Schofield and our entire Gage Park Horticultural Staff and Team under the management of Leanne Sealy. This is one of those shows that, Mr. Mayor, you'll recall, pre-amalgamation, back in the days when budgets were tight, that we almost lost this great show in our community, which is like a haven of rest during this fall time of year. But council of the day, Mr. Mayor, you and I, Ron, and others ensured that the show continued and it now attracts anywhere from 20,000 to 30,000 to 40,000 people over this 10-day period. So, please come out, enjoy your Mum Show at Gage Park Greenhouses from October 21st to the 30th and congratulations to all those who have made our community more beautiful with the Landscape Awards they're gonna win both commercially and residentially. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Let me add, the Horticultural Team throughout our city has done spectacular work planting, planting the islands and making our city look absolutely fantastic. I know you all agree with that and that's part of the work they do. So yes, applause for our great Horticultural Staff for all their great work. Counselor Marula on that note.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly, on October 27th at 7:00 PM at St. Helen's Centre at McQuestion, I'm hosting my 63rd quarterly town hall meeting and I look forward to all attending.
Counselor Green?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. As you, as you're well aware, the CN in partnership with the City of Hamilton created a $50,000 renewal of Woodlands Park, that project has been completed. I'm also happy to have that open conversation and dialogue now with the rail lines, taking a tour tomorrow along the rail lines, the CN yard, starting off at Stewart Yard, which should be very, very interesting. And then on the weekend, on Sunday, the 16th, Holy Spirit will be holding their Ukrainian Mass. I'm proud to be there, they've been a longtime proud Ukrainian community in our, on Barton Street, one of our anchor communities there, fantastic event. We also have, you'll remember Ibrahim Jammy Mosque, which was the target of a hate crime, which I considered a domestic terrorist attack. They're having an open house in their community on the 17th, which is an invitation to anybody who wants to learn more about Islam and about the mosque and the community that's there, a lot of Afghan members of the community, newly settled Syrians. I'd like to invite everybody, unfortunately, I myself, as you know, will be traveling to Ecuador and will be out of the country for that, but I'd like to extend to everybody watching the opportunity to go down to, lend your support, if you have the opportunity, to Ibrahim Jammy Mosque and just kind of show them, I think, what kind of community we have and support them after the attack that they had where there was an attempt to have a firebombing of their mosque. So, those are what we have to report in Wonderful Ward III and certainly look forward to other events happening around the city.
Thank you very much. And just to add to that, I got a wonderful note that I'll share with you from the leadership at the mosque for our signing of the charter unanimously supported by this council. They very much appreciate that show of support for their, not only their faith, but for their mosque and for the Islamic and Muslim community. So, appreciations to you all for signing on to that. Counselor Farr?
Thank you, Mayor Fred Eisenberger. I just want to open by thanking our initial speaker to my north for his comments about today's article and our ability to agree to disagree in a respectful way. I think he was referring to me among a few others when he also mentioned a minority, so I'll refer to him as the majority, all but one, he was the all part of the 2013 vote for a transformational transportation project as long as the province funded it. And so, we're there and we appreciate his majority support back in 2013. But, to that end, I want to make the note about being respectful. We kid each other a lot outside of committee and I guess, I didn't mention it last time and he certainly hasn't mentioned that I didn't mention it, but we had an apology to staff and others from Counselor Whitehead with regards to what some may perceive as an unfortunate exchange, certainly a elongated exchange at a Public Works about a month ago on Erkimer, Charlton. I guess I got personal, I know I got personal. I probably brought it to a level on occasion in that debate where I focused on the person and not the topic. And I learned a long time ago in my teens in professional broadcasting that you attacked the topic and not the person. So if there was anything I said that was offside, certainly I've already apologized on the side, but hearing committee, I'd like to get that across to Counselor Whitehead, if I can name names since I'm being nice this time. I have a very special announcement about Kathy Drewett's retirement party, the head of the Downtown BIA, retired September 30th, tomorrow night at Incognito, we're having a party. Also tomorrow night, Satches Take Back the Night Folks, 7:00 PM, you start marching or you get in one of their, very creative idea here, HSR buses or DARTS bus behind the march if you're not able to march and you'll be part of the march in that capacity. Meet at City Hall around 6:00, the march starts at 7:00 and the males are invited to gather at Gore Park to cheer on the marchers again this year. So, that's tomorrow night, City Hall. October the 18th, sorry, this is a date that's not relevant, but we heard today from a Paul Wilson article that Frank Manolphy has retired after four decades at Bar Michelangelo on James Street North. So, the good news is Charred, my favorite restaurant right now of all the great new restaurants, is expanding, it's doubling its size and capacity, but Bar Michelangelo's has taken this opportunity to step aside. So, that's something that, I'm trying to get there, he was closed yesterday, but I'm trying to get there and giving him a little plaque from all the people of Ward II for his dedication to James North and his cultural contributions as well. This note is ripped tonight, Mr. Mayor, because I wanted to hand this piece to Counselor Sam Marula, because really, he deserves to mention this, but at the very least, he deserves mention for bringing what is definitely gonna be an incredible tradition here in the City of Hamilton and that's Nosh. And that starts October 17th, it'll run until the 23rd, it's Hamilton's Culinary Week, week-long celebration of our culinary scene, everyone in this table and a lot of people in Hamilton know what a great scene, a burgeoning scene our culinary scene is. It's taking place too during, so strategically, once again by the Ward Counselor, by, during National Small Business Week, Downtown Hamilton BIA presenting Nosh to the core. Participating restaurants will be featuring an apple item, some even have full menus in celebration of Nosh. You can vote for your favorite Downtown Hamilton BIA participating restaurant and you will be entered to win a draw of $100 gift certificate from a participating downtown restaurant. But Nosh is citywide, it's not just downtown. I just had a note to, and a big thank you to Mike Marini as well from Economic Development. Counselor Marula comes up with great ideas and he's even better at delegating those great ideas and Marini got the brunt of it and certainly has been exceptional out of our Economic Development Department. So, celebrations of Nosh, October 17th through the 23rd. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. Just three quick things, Mr. Mayor. Thursday, October 13th, tomorrow, the Ainsley Wood Community Association has its regular meeting. This is 7:00 PM at the Fortino's on Main West in Ainsley Wood, in the community meeting room on the second floor of Fortino's. Broad variety of community topics will be discussed, be there or be square. On Monday, October the 17th, 7:00 PM, Strathcona Community Council has its executive meeting, planning for the upcoming SCC AGM. The meeting is going to be at either Erskine or Zion Church on Pearl in Strathcona, we don't know yet, so if anyone needs to know, email SCC or email me, I'm pleased to share, we should have that information nailed down this week. Tuesday, October the 18th, very important meeting for Ward I. There will be a meeting at St. George's Church in Ainsley Wood. This is regarding the proposed development at 925 Main Street West. This is a possible collaboration between McMaster University and a private sector developer for possible construction of a large student residence complex there on this piece of property. Some private properties, some McMaster properties, this is the block basically between Deewood Rec Center and the hospital on Main West. To clarify for the public, because I'm receiving many questions on this, nothing has been approved yet, we are still very much at the discussion stage. However, things are getting serious enough that we are holding a community meeting, a consultation. To reiterate, Tuesday, October the 18th, 7:00 PM at St. George's Church in Ainsley Wood regarding 925 Main Street West possible development. Thank you very much.
Counselor Conley, I'm gonna interject myself for a change in the middle of this and have a couple of announcements and I'm sure you will join me and our Jewish friends and neighbors as they bring the Yom Kippur, meaning the Day of Atonement, that is the holiest day of the year for the Jewish community, so will you send them best wishes? There are over 300 attendees in the 99th Annual Provincial Building and Construction Trades Council of Ontario in Hamilton right now, we certainly welcome them as they attend their conference across the street, our convention facilities. Having a conference in our community is always a positive thing, it's good for business, it's good for downtown restaurants, it's good for a whole range of things. So, on that note, I attended a city conference last Friday, this past Friday, I was one of the delegates, some of their panels, and welcomed the opportunity to participate and at the same time, got a confirmation commitment from them that they're prepared to bring their climate change conference to Hamilton in 2016, next year in the spring, which I think is an opportunity to reflect on and learn more about and understand more about what climate change means in our community, how we're going, how other communities are dealing with that. And there'll be attendees from, in fact, across the world coming to that conference in the spring of 2016, so I think that's good news. And lastly, congratulations to our very own partnered MIP on their 10th anniversary. It's been 10 years already that they've been growing their social innovation facility as well as the forge and the innovation factory and all the good work that's coming out of that. It's a partnership that's, the city and McMaster has long held out as an opportunity to grow not only research and innovation, but future businesses that can produce those wonderful innovations right here in Hamilton. Let me end with, I was in Eindhoven, the Netherlands recently for the very purpose of attending not only the Global Forum, which talks about the digital economy worldwide, and it was a fascinating conference and I'll report on that on a separate document to you. But it was also an opportunity to meet with leadership in Eindhoven that, you know, was a Philips town, I can share, and that Philips town, you know, at some point was built and developed the entire town and sometime in 2005 decided to leave that town and basically stranded some 60,000 employees in that community over a number of, about five years. So, we were there to see how they were dealing with that transformation. I had a good conversation with the mayor and they have gone miles in terms of transforming their former industrial spaces into innovation space and creativity space and research space, much like we are doing with Innovation Park and social innovation at a number of other locations and various buildings. So, I think there's a partnership opportunity with them, it's also leading ourselves higher in the wrong in terms of intelligent communities, which I think is very important for our city. All of them are good opportunities for us to lead ourselves into the next digital economy that is gonna be so very important for new communities that are trying to diversify not only their economy, but their employment base. So, very important issues that I will bring to you at the appropriate time, once we flush them out, as an opportunity to partner with Eindhoven and learn from them and they learn from us in terms of how we're both diversifying our economies and leading ourselves into the digital economy. So, very good information and I'll share with you soon and of course, all of the other events that were mentioned earlier, I'll be attending most, if not all, and look forward to participating in all of them. Lastly, let me say, Fest Italia, another fantastic success this year. A number of regional dinners and events right across the city, it's always a great opportunity to celebrate the Italian culture in our community. September is Fest Italia Month and I was pleased and delighted to be part of the festivities in all of the regional dinners, whether they were Abruzzo or the Sicilian one, they were all fantastic, great enjoyment had by all and I was able to share with them my experience in Racamulto and the Abruzzo region that we just celebrated our renewal of the twinning arrangements that's some 30 years old now and endures to this day and is very much appreciated by not only the Racamultesi, but the Abruzzesi and the Italian community at large. So, a wonderful opportunity to celebrate Fest Italia, enjoyed it muchly, I thank them all for their great effort to continue each and every year to put that together on behalf of some 80,000 Italians of, or 80,000 of Italian descent in our community, which is not particularly small numbers, quite large. So, thank you to them all for that continuing effort and I'm gonna turn to Counselor Conley. Thank you.
Thank you. I have just one item. On October 20th at 11:30, we're gonna have a ribbon cutting of the Upper Red Hill Valley Parkway. It's been open for about a month, but we thought it'd be good to have a ribbon cutting event, so that'll be 11:30 on October 20th. And Counselor Jackson will probably be there and Counselor Brenda Johnson will be there because we all share in the four-lane parkway that's been a godsend to our community. Thank you.
Thank you and I'm pretty sure I'll be there with a great big pair of scissors, I think the largest one we can find. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. I just want to, I've got six public announcements, but before I do, I just wanted to thank all those who came out to the Benbrook Traffic Meeting last week. We asked the fire services to go through all the streets in the village to see if there was any access, sorry, access problems and they came back and identified seven streets and said, they're tight now with the parking on both sides, but add a snow event and plowing and then it'd be near to impossible. So, we listed seven streets that are actually gonna be going parking to one side. The entire village is going to be put down to 40 kilometers, there's gonna be strategic stop signs and some pedestrian crossings. And I know, I can probably say, everybody around this table gets a lot of speeding and a lot of traffic calls, so this is part and parcel of listening to everyone and getting some of those things in place. So, thank you very much. Dan, to all your staff who were out there, the traffic, the parking, and even Chief Cunliffe came out to explain to everybody why he needed to identify seven streets. So, having said that now, this Sunday is Halloween Party, or Parade at the Lake Point Park. This Friday is the plowing match. Now, let's just put this on the record, I've won four out of the last five years, so I thought I'd step back this year to give these guys a bit of a shot. So, I'm unable to make it this Friday, but you know, really, it's just gonna open the field up a little bit and give them some confidence. On October the 18th, Stony Creek Chamber is having their trade show. And October 21st, Sinclairville has a spaghetti dinner. On the 25th of October, we have a similar traffic meeting, but only for Summit Park. We're having another one for Winona the week after that. And October the 29th, the Earl &amp; Lee Museum is having the kids' Halloween party. For all those and more details, please just go to my website, brendajohnson.ca. For all those and more details, please just go to my website, brendajohnson.ca.
Great. Thank you very much. Councillor Ferguson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And last week, I held an open house, as I think a number of people know, but it was well advertised for the issue of planning staff like to say large homes in mature areas. Joanne's not here, so she can't tune me up, but I call them monster homes, the ones that are just out of place. And, but it was interesting because 85 turned up for the afternoon meeting and about 100 for the evening meeting, so the old town hall was full. And the only, you know, planning staff are going off with everything they heard of that and come back to planning next spring with a recommendation how we can better control that in our community because of the large lots we have with little bungalows on them because they once had septic fields, and of course, they hooked up the sewers in the 70s. And, but they'll be coming back in the spring with some suggestions of how we can deal with it. Planning staff did an amazing job. They explained what we can't do and what we can do, just to open the meeting up. But something interesting that come out of it, and the three planning staff and myself, we're debating this before, over 50% of the people who spoke, spoke with criticism for our committee of adjustment. They feel when they go before committee of adjustment, because these people are asking for variances in order to build these big homes, and they feel that they're treated disrespectfully, they feel that nobody listens to them, and they just approve it. And so I'll be passing that along to the chairman of the committee of adjustment, that that's the perception my community has, and he may just, they want to be a little more cautious towards people, take time on their busy days to come in and publicly speak about a concern they have with the variances being asked for, and they just get dusted off, to use the expression that some of them gave. And so we want to make sure that our citizens are treated respectfully when they come before, just like we do at Planning Committee or GIC or Public Works or Auto Administration. So just that information to you on that, it was quite a surprise to us when we heard it. The second part is, I also wanted to express my appreciation to Helen, but I see she's left, but I chaired the non-union compensation, so I worked very closely with Helen for the last eight years while that committee was in existence, and she was great to work with, and she's going to be missed, but I suspect she won't do something else when she leaves and take it a little easier in her life. I'm also attending the Good Shepherd Dinner tomorrow night, councillor Jackson, and it's one of my favorite events to go to. Huge crowd, great program. It's a fundraiser for the good work they do in our community. And lastly, just for the record, my neighbor to the right, and she's already spoken to it, is afraid of us, so she's not coming on Friday. But any other member of council is welcome to come to Ann Castor's Plowing Match and take Robert and I on. Thank you.
All right. All right. I did see Helen cartwheeling and skipping out the back door there a little while ago. I'm not sure what that means, but I'm sure she appreciates the accolade. She's been a great employee. Councillor Vanderbeek, nothing for you? Councillor Pizzuto?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This past weekend was the Rockton World's Fair, and you had attended along with Chris Cutler from your office, and there was the Veterans Event, and part of that event, there was the Pigeonaires and the great work that the pigeons did during the wars, transferring messages. And of course, there was a Harvard flyover, the Four Plains, which was really unique, and all of the fairgrounds was just looking up into the sky. And then they had that again, the event was on Monday, but not as many attended, but he still, we had three Harvards fly through and release the pigeons. So great weekend, we had great weather right through, it was perfect, perfect weekend, and attendance was really high, so it's well done. I know councillor Jackson was there too with the family and friends, and councillor Vanderbeek was there, I don't know who else was there, but thank you, Rockton rocks. Thank you.
The weight of the largest pumpkin was?
I don't know.
Something like 900 pounds.
900 pounds?
Half a ton. Huh? Yeah, I mean, they were massively huge. I was wowed.
Sometimes they put the water hoses to them, and a little bit of beer helps them grow too, even or not.
Oh, okay, all right. Any particular brand?
It's milk. Well, beer makes a difference too. Some of them put.
Canadian beer, I hope, Canadian beer.
I hope so. This coming Tuesday, October 18th, there's going to be Public Information Centre in Linden for the, we're still working on trying to get a new well put in place. Source Water are going to be presenting down there and asking the public's opinion. They've got three different options to put in, a new pumping station with the well, so that, I'll be there for that. It's from 4:00 till 7:00, 4:30 till 7:00 PM at the Linden Legion. We will, I'll be at the Trillium Awards too, where councillor Jackson and other councillors will be at. And out on the farms there right now, they're going at a pretty strong harvesting soybeans and putting in winter wheat behind the soybean combine, and corn is starting to be harvested. This is grain corn, people say cow corn. Grain corn, it's, your corn is mature about 18, 20% on the cob. The combine shells it off, it gets put through a dryer, then this corn can either go for livestock feed, it can go for ethanol, go for cornstarch, corn oil, many products, over 10,000 products in the grocery store have some type of a corn product in them. So we're working on that, and I started a little bit of the soybean harvest, and I got to get into the corn, but I got about 20 days of going, so if I can find somebody to help me, or one of the kids or something, but I can't be everywhere, but we're working at it.
I keep volunteering. You never call. I thought I know anything about driving a tractor, but apparently councillor Johnson does.
It's not, it's not plowing, it's running the combine. The combine's worth a few hundred thousand dollars, and I can't risk councillor Johnson driving into a tree. So in saying that, yeah, that's about all I have right now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
She's trainable, I'm pretty sure.
No, no, she's not.
All right. Councillor Skelly may have a motion on the bill list as amended, please. It's in there somewhere, so probably, you know, you can just mouth it. Move by yourself, seconded by councillor Whitehead, that the bills as amended be adopted and approved. She moved that. All in favor?
Carried.
Carried, on the bills, Bill 262, 63, 64, 65, 66, 67. What did I miss? What, what, what?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. If I could just qualify that 265 is as amended because the amendment that carried on item two means there's an amendment to the bylaw as well.
265 as amended. All in favor? 266, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77. Carried. Motion to adjourn. Move by Farr, seconded by Marula. All in favor? Carried. Thank you all very much.